The executive session has been concluded and we're gonna take a break while we. Actually, do you need to switch recordings? Remind me what needs to happen?
Nope, we're good now. I already stopped it and started it again.
Okay. Does anyone need to take a break or shall we roll?
Miranda, I'm trying to open up that dinner with the commissioners, emailing the invites not showing what day and time you picked.
So it's on May 8th at 5:30.
Where?
To be determined. Somewhere up here.
May 8th at 5:30?
Yep.
Alright.
Alright, so if everyone's good to keep going, we'll just roll right into. Welcome everyone to the April 4th open meeting of the BOT. And so we have a consent agenda with five items on it tonight. Any, I guess, any clarifying questions from the BOT?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Here, Eric made the motion, I believe Jesse made the second, I hope, and then.
Do I sound friendly?
It was Nicole.
Nicole, you sound like you're from Arkansas. So Nicole, and if you would.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Mayor Pratam Mahal.
Yes.
Trusty Koonz Ismael.
Yes.
Trusty Corvallon.
Yes.
Trusty Mountain.
Yeah.
Trusty Sterling.
Yo.
Trusty Seaver.
Yes.
The last guy sounded like he's from Arkansas. Alright, thanks everyone for that. And then from, at this point, we'll move into public comment on non-agenda items. We hadn't submitted in advance, but if you have a public comment on a non-agenda item, let us know. And/or start talking.
So if I recall correctly, Kathleen Chaby had, does have a comment on non-agenda items, and then May Gerald had donated three minutes of her non-agenda items speaking time to Kathleen.
Yeah, I did reach out to May and May is just not feeling well. It's lost her voice. She knows that Kathleen will speak for her. So Kathleen, when you're ready, you got six minutes.
I believe she'll need to call in.
Hello?
Hi Kathleen.
I hear you.
I hear you.
Okay, this Kathleen Chaby, 32-year resident of East Magnolia, 20-year business owner. My hats off to all the women who owned and operated Frozen Dead Guy Day for accomplishing a successful festival for 20 years that just can't be replaced. My observation of the Nederlais Festival. Nederlais appeared to be a knee-jerk reaction to the blowback the town got after the public was officially informed Frozen Dead Guy was moving to Estes in early January after years of town adding new hoops to derail it, even though Frozen Dead Guy and Nedfest brought towns only economic bumps with record sales for most businesses over the last two decades. The legacy events were conceived and nourished by long-term local individuals, and they embraced and enhanced the culture of the community. They were successful in attendance and participation because those organizers' energy, passion, ability to read the community, wants and needs, and yes, organization. This success was earned and can't just be bought, assumed, or relayed to other events. It was those things that brought the attendees from all over the world and the businesses' economic booms. People felt the genuine nature of the events because of the organizers' daily community energy. It wasn't about money, but it but its heartfelt and organic nature brought money towards upwards in the hundreds of thousands to the community that recycled in the community in the millions. Leave Nederland the way you found it seems to be a common town mantra, and now the town public engagement manager is saying do Nederland right. The town staff complained year after year about the disputable lack of organization and cleanup by Frozen Dead Guy Days, and concern of injury and mud and straw on town land were always parts of that contention. When Nederlais brought snow, sledding to First Street, straw bales, rocks, and dirt came with it. When the snow mound was plowed off the middle of the street and the street reopened, there was two feet by two feet of snow, rocks, and dirt and debris left plowed against the sidewalks on the north side of First Street. This made assessing the sidewalk when you got out of your car hazardous for over a week due to the snow and ice and another week since because of rocks and mud. This mess was not only as bad, has bad optics of disregard, but physical hazard for all. Town staff violated its own new mantra, do Nederland right. First Street was not left in the same condition it was found prior Nederlais, which is ironic considering towns' public statements about how Frozen Dead Guy irresponsibly left mud in a park that has never really not had mud or been maintained with a lawn. To have dirt, rocks, and straw left all over the pavement on First Street by town staff and weeks after the event is pretty shocking and unacceptable. I've had numerous locals and tourists complain to me since the 25th, and two nights ago, as I was carrying a box from my shop to my car, I stepped off the sidewalk and landed on a rock three to four inches in size, twisted my ankle, and fell all over the street with the contents of my box all around me. I cursed the town at no one at 11:15 PM. So yesterday, I spent the day going into the open retail shops on First and in the shopping center for feedback on Nederlais, and I will email that at a later moment. Hold on one second. I don't have the other end. Hold on. I'm not going to mention names as town staff tends to retaliate, but from what I found, no one appreciates the dirt, rocks, and straw that was left and is still on First Street. And aside from being the main roadway, looking uncared for, and being a physical injury hazard, the debris is being tracked into the stores and an additional cleaning burden to the businesses. There is at least one foot pile of dirt and rocks blocking the steps up to the sidewalk on the north side of the street, and a huge pile of the same blocking the dirt walkway next to the Wings of Lace. There is straw blown all over First Street. This makes no sense whatsoever, and I will email my photos. The DDA packet from January 11 asked the DDA for 8,500 for the event and said Nederlais was, quote, "A new town-sponsored event with a focus towards the local community and driving traffic into Nederland businesses." Yet the business owners were forced to come up with their own in-house events to be included into the digital-only festival map, or pay the town 150 to sponsor an activity that had little to no attendance because there wasn't proper marketing or interest. As a business owner on First Street, I made my normal sales for Friday. I witnessed maybe two or three people attend the silent disco. I made exactly zero sales Saturday from 10:00 AM till 1:00 PM since the road was closed down for sledding activity. There was no one on the street for hours other than, less than a handful of sledders. When the road reopened, I made sales lower than normal, and only two people had heard there was a festival, but said they could not find the cocoa or the ice sculptures. The sledding activity I witnessed from 10 till noon was no more than six kids for no more than 30 minutes total and equal or less time by event staff. It was fine that my benches and storefront area was used as the staging area, but it would have been nice to have been asked prior it occurring. The shopping center business feedback on the square dance attendance was five people or no more than 20, including the staff. I was also told that any traffic that one shop got on Saturday came from the diligent efforts of Wild Bear itself and not town. I heard there would have been nothing over in their shop without Wild Bear and Jill. My overall assessment in Nederlais was that town rushed into something that was thrown on businesses' shoulders, wasn't organized or marketed properly, guilted the DDA into spending 8,500, didn't clean up after itself,
Thanks Kathleen, we appreciate it. 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 Thanks Kathleen, we appreciate it.
And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts. And got the turnout that reflected what went into it. I thought the event failed on all fronts.
Thanks Kathleen. 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 Thanks Kathleen.
Most importantly, the town is not responsible for. 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 Most importantly, the town is not responsible for.
Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. Please go ahead and just send us the rest of the email. First. 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 First.
And interested in learning more. So I believe that Sue, so we have some representation here. Susan Kelly is the president of the Library Foundation and they are, she's a big believer and has lots of experiences with global travel. And they're the ones, one of the ones that's going to be helping sponsor the program. So if Susan is able to jump on and say hello, that would be great. I'm going to stop sharing. Let's see.
Susan, you're on mute.
Okay, here I go again. I'm just really happy to be here. Beside Elektra, I really believe in this program. It's very, very exciting for me. I've spent much of my career overseas. So I am the current president of the Nederland Community Library Foundation. And our foundation is really committed right now to supporting this program with the help of some of our community partners. So.
Oh, I just saw Andrew Bliss, another Nederland board member is on the call. So.
So we're really excited to welcome our Nederland, our Netherland global neighbors.
Thank you, Jesse, for smiling, Jess. And we're going to be looking for students. Oh, Chris Larson's on too. So he knows we're going to be looking for students and chaperones. So really, that's all we really had to share now. But I just wanted you all to know what was going on with your favorite community library. And I'm sure there'll be some awesome partnership opportunities. So are there any questions or? Alrighty, I will self mute, never happens.
Thanks, Elektra. We were just, I was just talking to Jesse about the value of these sister city, you know, sister programs. And this is really cool to see that this is already underway. So thanks.
You were saying something how we should consider becoming a sister city?
Right, so I know quite a bit about it. I'd be happy to share that with you. So right now we are a sister city library. And then the sister city is another part because of course it needs to come from you, our municipal leaders. It's a, but I can tell you all about it. And it does provide, there's actually conference funding. There are all sorts of things that come with it. And I think it'd just be a really wonderful kind of new refresh. I'll just share one story that I thought was so cute. I met with it. So I was over there a couple of weeks ago and I met with their students that are really excited. And you know, they were talking about the things that, you know, weigh on them the most, which is like all of us, that some climate change, sustainable issues. And they were saying, wait, what's your altitude? You know, it was like eighty-two, thirty-six feet. And they're like, what's that in meters? And they're like, whoa, we need to connect with y'all because our sea level is rising. You know, everyone knows. And I'm like, yeah, we need to connect with you guys. Because if you don't know, one of the things that I think is absolutely amazing about the Netherlands is their vertical gardening. So you might not know this, but they are the number two exporter in the world after the United States for produce, because they have these amazing vertical gardening systems and the way they use water. So there's all sorts of interesting things that we can learn from them. They can learn from us. But it was so cute. The kids were like, wait, how high are you? And I did promise them a moose, so we do need to deliver on that. But anyway, and some, you know, boozy brews. So thanks, everyone. And I can get with you, Tony, later and tell you about.
That'd be great. And I just think it's a great program. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
All right, moose and boozy brews. We got it. We totally got it. Great job, Elektra.
Can we get Elektra to come back and present this as a possible thing that we could do as a city?
Yeah, Elektra, would you be willing to come back?
Sure, I'd love to.
More about that. Someone else had emailed me about the fact that we had this relationship with, he just said, a place in.
Yeah, I would love to. And well, and I think you also all know that after Frozen Deck Guy Days, the second number group of tourists that purchase stuff is from the Netherlands. The Dutch love to come here. So import, export is what I'm thinking at your visitor's. So I would love to do it. I, it's a big passion of mine that I like to do on my own time. So yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Miranda and get that on the calendar. And again, I've been involved in two cities starting it. So I can be thrilled to help you out with it. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, this man also recommended, suggested a festival based on, you know, Holland and our ties to that. So interesting idea and definitely the sister cities could open up. Well, I'd like to learn more. So thanks. Appreciate that. Is it for tonight for our information, informational items? And we're going to have, we have three action items tonight. One is, uh, first one we're going to get into right now, rezoning one hundred first street. We started on this conversation back in February twenty-first, I believe. And then timed out. So we are, um, we are back tonight to continue this discussion in this quasi judicial hearing on rezoning one hundred first street. Miranda?
Yes, so this is a continuation of the public hearing, as Mayor Billy noted, that started in February. But due to time, we had to continue it. So I'm just going to run through the quick background here on this again. So this is a consideration of a rezone application for one hundred first street. The applicant, who is Netherland Central Business District Redevelopment LLC, is represented by Ron Mitchell, who I believe is on the phone. Currently, this property is zoned high density residential. And the applicant is seeking to have it rezoned to Central Business District. So in your agenda packet, we review, and I'll actually, I'm going to share a screen as I go. We reviewed kind of the difference between high density residential and Central Business District. And really, primary difference, of course, high density residential is for residential uses only and parks. Whereas if it was zoned CBD, there is commercials, primarily commercial. And then mixed use may be possible through an SRU. So it would change a kind of the allowed uses of this space. Here's a site map of one hundred first street. It is often called one hundred east first street. Official address is one hundred first street. It is the parcel that is south of the intersection of First and Snyder. And here's another kind of circular picture. So currently, this lot is being used as a parking lot. There's also, it had previously been a place where the applicant had grown hops. But right now there are twenty spaces. And it does a but the river, which is undeveloped, and it fits within two floodplains. Under high density residential, the applicant had discussed or had previously proposed doing a workforce housing. And in his redevelopment plans, you can see what that original proposal was, which was sixteen residential units and then a park on the south side. The applicant had said he no longer is interested in or seeking to build housing on this lot. He decided to keep it a parking lot at the request of the local businesses. He also feels that this is a perfect site, that in addition to the parking, it could help to deal with some of the storm runoff and address drainage issues on First Street. He also recognizes that a town has talked at times about a location for a second bridge. And while there's been no formal discussion with this applicant, he is aware that this could be a lot, which could be considered. The applicant has really kind of talked about his desire to move this to Central Business District is to create more parking in town. The applicant is interested in making this paid parking, so it would go along with his plans to make his other parking lots pay parking for there to be a mini park and to again, address the drainage retention and have a retention pond for storm water. The applicant provided a narrative that provides further information on his proposal. When looking at the comprehensive plan, you know, there's definitely a mixture of how the applicant's proposal complies with the comprehensive plan. And I think it's important to note that housing is identified need. And as currently zoned high density, it would allow this to be developed for multiple housing units. So there is something to be, to be said about the way the zoning currently is. There's also an acknowledgement that we need parking. And currently in high density residential, it limits the applicant's ability to do no more than twenty spaces. If it turned into Central Business District and he did pay parking, it becomes an other commercial activity. And there could be additional parking, especially in that downtown core, which is noted as a focal part of this comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan and the Parks to Recreation Open Space Master Plan talks quite a bit about parks and integrating more recreational or park opportunities, which the applicant has noted he would do. And then also drainage is highlighted throughout the comprehensive plan as something that needs to be addressed, especially in the downtown area. So the Board of Trustees, I mean, it really needs to focus on these specific criteria, as three of them, and decide whether this application meets reason, it meets the criteria for rezoning. I think it's really important to note that in sixteen two fifty-five, it states, "For the purpose of establishing sound, stable, and desirable development within the town, the rezoning of land is to be discouraged. Rezoning should only be considered, again, if the applicant meets one of the following criteria." The first is, "The land to be rezoned was zoned in error and is presently zoned is inconsistent with the policies and goals of the comprehensive plan." The applicant has claimed in his narrative that the parcel was zoned in error. We were not able to determine that in the property file, but the applicant did speak to its former uses as a possible, or as a stable for horses, as well as storage for vehicles in a wrecking yard. But again, we do not have any documentation of that. We acknowledge that the comprehensive plan does cite the need for additional housing in town. So the current high density residential is not necessarily inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. The area for rezoning is the second criteria. Area for rezoning is requested, has changed or is changing to such a degree that it is in the public interest to encourage a redevelopment of the area. Yeah, I think again, a big piece that the Board of Trustees really needs to think about is if this is rezoned, it would create more commercial opportunities. That, that's for the board to decide really, if you feel that that is needed or if you feel that there's the housing that's needed and recognition that there's kind of aspects of both. Again, the applicant is arguing that if he's allowed to create additional parking, that that will really help the town, especially in busy season, since we do currently struggle with parking challenges. And then the last one is, "The proposed zoning is necessary in order to provide land for a community-related use, which was not anticipated at the time of the adoption of the comprehensive plan. And such rezoning will be consistent with the policies and goals of the comprehensive plan." And again, it kind of really goes down to assessing the different aspects of the comprehensive plan, because we do recognize the comprehensive plan calls for housing. We also recognize that one thing that was not evaluated in the comprehensive plan was our parking challenges. Comprehensive plan really actually alludes to having plenty of parking back in two thousand thirteen. And we know that that's not obviously consistent to what we see today. And then also acknowledging that the comprehensive plan does speak to parks and drainage. I do just want to note that when it comes to drainage, we've talked about it with our engineers. Nathan Scallik, our engineer, kind of provided an analysis of what might need to be done to address the drainage. Mark Hall, who's our streets manager, has really noted that there needs to be a much larger comprehensive look at drainage as a whole and not just this little section of downtown. So while we're not saying no, we're not at a place where we feel like we can enter into any sort of negotiation or agreement with the applicant related to drainage, because we need to understand the issue as a whole. At the Planning Commission meeting in January, they did unanimously recommend that the BOT deny this rezone application. They did not feel that the application met the criteria and really did express concern that if rezoned, it's possible that this site could be developed in other ways than what the applicant has noted, because it would be zoned as a use by right under the Central Business District. And so that's staff report. I don't know if there's any questions. And I'll bring the evaluating criteria back up on the screen, Mayor Billy, when you get into your discussion. But any questions for me?
I have one question. When something's zoned commercial, there can still be housing, but it has to be on the second floor.
It has to be mixed use.
Mixed use.
Yeah.
So it could be on the first floor.
How, how it's done would really, yeah, that it just has to be commercial and residential.
Is there a percentage or any sort of formula for it or just?
There is a percentage. And I was just going to get to that. I don't have that right in front of me. I don't know if Terry Madsen, you do, but I was going to search it.
Think that was my question. That's it. Thanks.
And once I get that, Trustee Coraline, I'll jump in with that percentage.
Thank you.
Any other? Any clarifying questions for Miranda right now?
I actually did have.
Yeah.
Question.
I got one. In the packet, it said that there's, they anticipated the tax revenue to go up four X. Is that substantiated? Can you verify that?
I cannot, you mean the applicant's letter? I cannot verify that.
Okay. In the discussions on the bridge, I, I know that's underway, but where does this particular site stack in, in the rank of things? And it might be germane to, to tonight, but not, might not. But where does, how suitable is it?
So when the Board of Trustees did a tour of different secondary bridge locations, this is one that was determined viable. The, the board members who were present did not rank them in any certain order. And I think that their feeling was that would come with further evaluation. The town did submit to have the second bridge be a congressionally directed funding project. We have yet to hear if we were selected for that. But there would definitely need to be additional analysis before a true assessment could be made of whether that's, that's truly the, the best or the top option for a second bridge.
I will say that when we discussed the GDS funding, Nathan said that was one of his two top, top two.
Okay, that's good, no.
Nathan, the engineer with JBA.
Where are the, you, you mentioned that there was two, two drainage things. Are they the east and west sides of the lot or where on the lot are they?
So there's two, you mean the floodplains?
Yeah.
The floodplains are on the north and south part of the lot.
North and south, okay. So the north side is currently parking. And so that parking would go offline if that were to flood. And then the south side is directly creekside.
Right, and so that is why the applicant is proposing that some storm water runoff in a rain garden and, and some ways to divert the water that runs down First Street. But again, I think the streets department is just not quite ready to say that's the best solution. We really, you know, Mark really needs to see it. He needs to know what we're working with, with Nathan when we hit runoff in order to assess, you know, we don't want to do it just, just that one area of First Street. We want to tackle drainage on all of the Central Business District.
When's, is that, when's that going to be on our docket? Or is that something we're going to look at? Obviously, I don't know that he budgeted for it this year, but when would we look at that?
So it'd be something that would be evaluated under the, the master infrastructure plan. To your point, we didn't budget for it. So Mark is on and on the spot a little bit, but my assumption would be something we'd look at where it falls within all master infrastructure projects and determine if it's something that needs to be funded next year. But it's likely not something we'd be able to fully address this year. We can address drainage, the drainage issues, but a long-term solution would not likely come this year.
Okay. And flooding events that do flow into there, how often do we get those? Is it like an every four-year situation?
I can't really speak to flooding events. You know, I do know that the property just east of that lot does have concerns about the way in which the runoff kind of just pools into his property. I'm not sure I would call it necessarily flooding. It's really a runoff management issue, probably more than anything. You know, the water is going to pull in, because it does kind of dip in. So the water will pull into that, that lower area anyways. But the applicant will have to speak to this a little bit more. But I think for us, it's a, it's a drainage issue just because of the way First Street slopes.
Okay. And the, the applicant also talked about possibility of using it as a park. If our parks people looked at that, is that something that's on their agenda?
It is not on their agenda, because it would be a privately owned park. Unless the applicant was going to donate the property, which I don't, he has not expressed that that is being considered. I think it's a privately owned park.
Okay.
And I just want to quickly enter Trustee Coraline. So for mixed use, thirty percent of the total use shall be commercial or office.
Okay.
So give me some time to find that.
Yeah, thank you so much for that.
Multi tech in over here.
John, I think you had a question?
I did. There was a concern that was raised in the Planning Commission meeting about the possibility for the site to be developed in a non-conforming way from the application at, as what was outlined in the application. Would a PUD help with that process to kind of guide, to put in guardrails around that application conformance?
Well, attorney Madsen, a little bit here. I mean, this, this parcel doesn't qualify for a PUD. And so I think that, that would be, there are many aspects of it that would need an SRU agreement, which holds some similar value. I mean, less ability to, to adjust yard and bulk requirements. But definitely, when you look at some uses, but much, you know, in terms of like offices, space and retail space, that's all used by right, if it were to be zoned Central Business District. And I think that's the concern is, from the Planning Commission, the applicant said, oh, it's parking, a park and drainage. At no point did the applicant say, in his narrative, that he's going to build a building. But he could build a resident or a commercial or a mixed-use building that then could have whatever retail or commercial space is he'd like in it. And that's all used by right.
I don't know if this is the place to bring it up, but I know I've mentioned it with you many times, Miranda, about compromising with maybe giving it a neighborhood commercial zoning. And being told that spot zoning is discouraged, but everything across the street is spot zoning. Have we at all talked to the applicant if that's something that he would be agreeable to? Or should we ask him later? Can I ask him later that or?
Yeah, I think you can ask him. We have not talked to the applicant about.
Right, I haven't either, being, obviously judicial. So I guess I'll just save this for the future. But that's something that's on my mind. I just kind of wanted to put it out to the rest of the board as a potential compromise.
And just for clarification, and what Trustee Coraline, I've talked about is it's the, the properties immediately to the north, not the immediate north. That's Snyder, that's Snyder Garage and that's Central Business District. But everything east of that is actually neighborhood commercial on the north side.
Every house till Front Street.
Correct, yeah.
Good suggestion. Regarding, I mean, the town, the legal perspective and the, and the town's perspective, a bridge agreement could happen, whether it's high density residential or CBD, correct? Whether it gets rezoned or not, or, or neighborhood commercial for that matter.
So our, our use group table does not speak to bridges?
Right. Okay.
I don't know. I mean, I think that's something we'd have to handle. I think you've got the municipal infrastructure in the use group table. And I think that's the big question is, is a municipally owned bridge? And I would assume that would be the desire of the Board of Trustees to work with the applicant to make sure this land, there was, you know, an easement or some sort of land. So this becomes a municipal owned parcel of sorts. And then you have a lot that happens used by right for municipal facilities or uses in town. I would, Attorney Madsen, please jump in if you feel like I'm off, but I think it would fall into that category. She may have froze right when she was going to chat.
But, oh, I just turned my video off. I don't know if that helps.
Yep.
Yep, great. So, um, you, it's, we're only talking about one lot here. So you can't have, you know, part of it be a municipally owned and the other part be privately owned. So if you were going to have some of it municipally owned, you'd have to have it subdivided. But you could have an easement. And you're right, Mayor Billy, that this could be done. An easement for the bridge could be done, no matter what zone, district the, the lot is in.
Okay, that's what I was curious. Thank you. Any other clarifying questions?
You know, to that point, I guess the, the, the thing that we'd have to think through is potentially what makes most sense? If there is a second bridge there, does it make sense to have it butt up next to something zoned CBD or something zoned high density residential with residential units on it? So that, I would say would be something that we all kind of consider.
And I also want to really focus the board on the criteria that's before you and not on hypotheticals of what could happen in the future. So really focus on the criteria under sixteen dash two fifty-five related to rezoning requests.
Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, just for me, I wanted to know whether, whether it mattered in the long term, you know? However, it was zoned, but yeah, I, I agree. We got to come back to just those three points. Any other clarifying questions? If not, we'll go to public comment. I know we had, we.
You're going to give the applicants a chance to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, yes, yes, of course.
Oh, Billy, I have one, just one question.
Yes.
Which is that fundamentally, according to town staff, Miranda, the only thing that is fundamentally different is the addition of paid to the lot. So the applicant is essentially asking for a rezone from the town's perspective here. Asking for a rezone. And the only thing that will actually change is that they'll be allowed to charge for parking.
And increase their parking count, but yes.
So at the moment, under high density residential, the parking count is limited to twenty?
Yeah, so it is. Actually, let me pull it up, because now that I say that, I have to look. I think that there needs to be a special review use even increase above twenty. So there's still being SRU and then the paid parking, you're right, is the, the Central Business District component here.
Right, so it would, it would need to have an SRU, no matter which zone it's in, to increase above twenty spaces.
Yeah, I was going to pull up in that section of code, but.
I just want to make sure we're all, everyone's just clear on what exactly is being asked for here fundamentally.
Hey, Trace?
Yeah.
You go.
You mean, specifically what's being asked for is the ability to have more than twenty parking spaces?
Well, I don't want us to be making a decision based on any of those criteria that includes any kind of erroneous logic about the number of parking spaces that would be allowed in different zones.
Yeah, so, so thank you. Section sixteen to ten says parking lots containing more than twenty spaces shall be designated as special review uses.
And that is regardless of zone.
Correct, because there is no, our use group table does not specify parking lots as a use.
Right. And so that, that essentially means the only, the only functional change here then is that the, that they can charge for parking, that the applicant can charge that for parking.
Yes, under his current.
Under that plan that's been submitted. Okay, I just want to make sure that that's what we're talking about. Thanks.
John, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, actually it did. I, I did have one other question with regard to high density residential, which I think most, if not everybody in this meeting, if not in town, is concerned about. Is there, are there other applicants that the town is aware of that are ready, willing and able to begin building HDR in a very, on a very short notice? In other words, they've already expressed interest and they have backing to do so?
No, I am not aware of anyone.
The only other HDR part of town, I believe, is Old Town, Old, Old Town.
Okay, we are over here too, Billy. Or are we, Miranda, in Dyers?
I have to look at the zoning.
Yeah, I think you're different.
Okay.
I think it's just Old Town and that one, you know, and runs, runs property.
So Miranda, both sides of First Street to the east of this property are, are, can they both go both commercial, they can be a mixture of commercial and residential?
But there, so there are more restrictions for neighborhood commercial. There are more requirements to go through the SRU process. Mixed use is one of those that is considered a special review use. What is allowed use by right, just kind of a quick rundown. Allowed use by right is single-family dwelling units, multi-family dwelling units, up to four units. Special review use would require anything exceeding four units. And then what is used by right when it comes to the commercial uses would be office, financial, medical and personal services. Anything else like a retail establishment or like a restaurant would be SRU.
And or a hair salon or something like that?
So that would be considered a commercial, it would be considered a, a personal service. Basically, yeah, your, so it's office, financial, medical, personal services.
Got it.
Hairdresser as a personal service. But like you're eating, drinking, retail, enclosed is all special reviews.
Got it. Got it.
And then, I'm sorry, I have one more question. I'm the new guy, so I'm gonna ask all the questions here. Would it be possible for the town to um put in some form of addendums or some, some um, some kind of? Guidelines around night parking and overnight parking, um, such that the amount of time. Uh, that that folks can be in this lot. Were it to be converted to paid parking could be limited somehow. Um, to, you know, twenty-four hours or or less. Is that something that is, is that a reasonable? Um, that additional feature that we could add?
So those other commercial activities, um, currently. The applicant does have a kind of a pending SRU agreement for parking, and if I recall correctly, there are like stipulations. Of that sort. Um, and and so this would be required, an SRU agreement would be required regardless of this was neighborhood commercial or CBD. For other commercial activity being paid parking, there would be the SRU hearing and and some, you would talk with the applicant and could see if that's. Let me go work into that agreement.
Okay, thanks.
I I just want to clarify, I just said something incorrectly earlier, so the the places where high density residential exist are Old Town, majority of Old Town. From this lot, we're talking about Hundred East First or Hundred First Street. And everything to the east of it on the south side of First Street is also high density residential, and then there's like five or six lots. On the east side of Congress Street, basically behind the BNF. Those are also high density residential and a little bit um to. To the south of Old Town, on the inside of the Big Hairpin Turn, there's. So there's, there's a few other areas, but I don't think there's any other. You know, movements to develop it as as you asked. Any other clarifying questions?
So hold on, I was, I was gonna wait with this question, but I'll ask it now. Sorry, Tanya, did you have something?
Uh, I just wanted to ask John if his question, the the, what he had asked about restricting twenty-four, after twenty-four hours, is that to prevent people from using it as a campground? Is that what you were thinking? So I I imagine we we have, uh, we could probably come up with something that would restrict that. Maybe?
Yeah, that's exactly right. I think the um, the concern that I I would have would be uh more or less around trash and and waste and those sorts of things that could occur. Due to that, so so close to the creek, I guess.
Yeah.
Thanks, good point for clarifying.
Um, sorry, I'm done, Eric, thanks.
So what I was gonna ask, I guess, is for Attorney Mattson and and or for Miranda, is whether uh. A similar effect to what the applicant is uh seemingly asking for could be achieved. By adding uh outdoor sales or something similar to the HDR zoning use table.
That's absolutely.
Yep. Great. Put them on the use group table to allow, yeah, that. Um, because currently other commercial activity, I think, is. Requires an SRU. For all zones, CBD, neighborhood, commercial and general commercial.
And you could add, I mean, really, you don't have a parking. Use, and um, so that's something to consider as well, is that you don't have. The ability to have really just parking lots.
Right, so we could make a code amendment potentially that added parking. As a use and added that to the use group tables of every zone. Uh, whether or not paid parking was allowed, whether or not it was a parking structure or. Uh, parking on a flat, on an undeveloped lot, like we could have rules around whether or not something could be parking. Across the board rather than doing this in a piecemeal way as we are now.
That is, that's definitely a possibility, yes.
Well, I I would be in favor of that, but how do we, how do we? Do that?
And if I have. It would, I think it'd be a fairly uh simple. Code amendment, uh, we would pass an ordinance that essentially added a column to every zones use group table and. That would have a, that would, that would be for parking. With, of course, some language to explain it.
So one of the, so clarifying question here, so if um parking was offered or the code was amended and parking became like its own row. For each of the use groups and then parking could be allowed in high density residential. Um, there has been concern expressed in the past of like, what does that potentially open up, which, I mean. I, I personally don't think it's necessarily a concern, but you could have residents. Saying, well, I want to rent out my my driveway or, you know, this to, you know, to to drive additional revenues, which. There are apps out there already today where people can say, hey, you, we're having a festival, you want to place the park, here's, pay me twenty bucks, here's my driveway. Um, but just wanted to throw it out there if other folks had that there was a concern potentially of allowing, you know. This, this idea of parking regardless of um the uh the use group.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it would have to be. You know, a well thought out uh amendment to the code, right, where it kind of said whether or not that parking was. You know, with with an improved parking structure in place, or whether it was using existing structures uh to provide parking. And then like, maybe there would be some rule about how many spots you can have. You know, by by some kind of yard and bulk measurement, you know, by percentage of lot size or something along those lines, right, so it would. So it wouldn't just be like willy nilly, everyone can park on every single square inch of everybody's yard and people can charge for it. Um, because that could become a disaster, but I kind of love the idea of somebody renting out their driveway. Uh, for a festival for parking, I think that's pretty creative and, you know, tracks pretty well with the way the economy is going.
I think Boulder County.
We get sales tax.
I think Boulder County actually, Boulder County actually experimented with a program like that. Um, to allow residents to um rent out their driveways or their their parcels of land, so.
I definitely want to, you know. If we're gonna do something like this, moving into more of a public process, because I'm sure that, yeah, someone who lives in Old Town, I'm sure the people of Old Town. Would want to be heard about about this. Because it would affect that area mostly.
But fundamentally, we don't even, it doesn't even have to be used by right, right, so like if we decided to add parking. To uh the use group tables for zones, it could be SRU or not allowed, right? There could be no, just generally allowed to just park it.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, if anything, it's kind of a compromise, something like that seems like a compromise. I think neighborhood commercial feels like a compromise. Um, I guess let's hear what.
I like that, man.
Let's hear what the applicant has to say.
Yeah.
Ron. The, I think the applicant has actually suggested this specific idea. Um, if I'm.
Which one?
Uh, the one of allowing parking in HDR.
Yeah, no, I I think we did talk about that back in February some, yeah, and and. And it, and it may be a good compromise, again, I do want to make it more of a public process, how we. Talk about it.
It has to do with what we're being asked to judge on tonight.
Right, right. It does not, so, um, that being said. Uh, Ron, would you? Do you want to talk right now as the applicant?
Ron, I did have to mute a couple of column users, so you may need to press star six if you're on the phone.
Can you just unmute him?
No, unfortunately I can't, once I've got column users, I can't unmute it unless they unmute themselves.
Did he scramble to go rent out his driveway? Sorry, bad joke.
His driveway. Give him another minute.
I just texted him to make sure. That he, if he wants to speak, he can unmute.
Star six, Ron, if you can hear us.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Can hear you now.
Good, it took a bit. I have to uh use both the screen on my phone because of the uh. Phone goes into my hearing aids and I can't hear it when I just use the uh computer screen, so thank you for your forbearance. Uh, lot of comments. Um, the potential for housing and mixed use. Uh, with the uh, uh, high density residential doesn't exist, but it does for uh CBD. And I guess down the road, uh, I, I don't think people are aware of what my overall plan has been, so I want to inject that at this point. Uh, if the town approves a redevelopment on the entire block. Uh, between First and Second, one nineteen and Snyder, part of that proposal is underground parking. Uh, and if that were approved and came to fruition, this parking lot wouldn't be needed at all. You could put any one of the three options, uh, which were uh just housing or housing and. Uh, residential, mixed use or commercial. I think the uh mixed use makes the both most sense. Uh. There were several comments, uh, I wanted to ask Tanya what her uh question was again, uh, as she was gonna ask me, would you ask that question, Tanya?
Oh, yeah, um, it was just if you would be um in favor of it being zone neighborhood commercial. With an, you know, then you would get an SRU for the paid parking. Or does it have to be, does it have to be?
Well, you know, if we can come to some compromise, a neighborhood commercial would be acceptable, that would probably be acceptable for me. Um, I have to be able to charge for parking as as in the uh uh review. The IRS will not let me grow hops, grow flowers or anything else and take it off my untold taxes as part of the maintenance of the parking lot. Unless there's revenue. So. If we can't come to some kind of agreement, I'll just have to close the parking lot, period, and wait until such time as the uh it, the residential use could be built. Uh. That's not what's needed currently right now. And uh, so I would, my long term plan looking at is certainly if you've got three hundred cars parked. Underground across the street, you're probably not going to need anything more here than the parking for the residents on the property. The the next question that you're gonna ask is how do I guarantee that? I don't know, I can't. I don't know if it'll get approved or if anything will get approved. So, uh, that's the reason. Consistency of zoning for an entire uh development, to me, makes sense. Doesn't make sense if you do select a site. Or a bridge, doesn't make a lot of sense to have uh housing. Right next to a busy bridge where there's a lot of fumes, a lot of noise. And uh be pretty hard to uh raise kids or have couples that have children in a development that close to a very busy bridge. Uh, the, my preference in terms of. The town would be to subdivide that lot, I do not want to uh own the land if it's got a municipal bridge on it. Uh, that's the town's responsibility, I think having an easement just muddies things up. I think it would be much better to each person have their own uh property and the town have its own property, I. Uh, I don't, I don't like the idea of an easement. But nevertheless, if that's the only option, I'm probably gonna consider it.
Um, what would you prefer? I mean, obviously you want to have a, you want a commercial that's preferred, but. Like if, what if there was a, where we changed high density housing to allow for paid parking? That would satisfy the need, your needs?
Well, again, I, your attorney said, I don't know if this is spot zoning or what it is.
She said we could do it, it's changing.
Kind of an isolated piece of property in the middle of a, uh, an area between two other zones that. Doesn't seem to have any continuity with uh high density housing. I guess, I'm not sure. Uh, in answer to your question, uh, if you uh allowed that. And uh, I, I think that'd be fine. I I said that before, I actually put that in my addendum. That if I could have paid parking and increased parking in that zone. That would satisfy the uh existing need. And then sometime in the future, if there's a three hundred car underground parking lot, uh, housing could be put there. Um. I do think that it uh would help the business community have some, but if it's such a huge issue. Uh, and it seems to be, uh, that I'm quite willing to say, if you give me paid parking and additional parking. Uh, I would be happy with that, that's, I think that's a, a reasonable compromise. Anybody else have a question on me? There were a couple of other things that were stated. That I, I wanted to answer, but I I can't remember them right off.
Yeah, real quick, Ron, this is John, um, hi. I, I, I did ask a little bit earlier with regard to if this were to be converted to paid parking. Um, I, I know that you do some things for the town, just, uh, you know, to try to keep it. Prettyed up and and in nice condition. Uh, what, what sort of safeguards would you put in place to keep things from getting a little? I guess trashed up really close to the river there. For example, would you disallow overnight parking and those sorts of things?
Yeah, I would definitely, I think, uh, overnight parking or uh RVs or things like that would. Really be a slap in the face to the neighborhood. And I would definitely uh be willing to uh limit parking to uh daylight hours up to when the bars close. And uh, I'd be quite willing to tow people off unless. Somebody actually was so drunk they had to get a taxi and go home, I think in a, in a safety situation where it could be verified. That would be okay, but I'm definitely not, and I don't now allow RVs there when I can catch them, but there are people that. Have brought giant uh um recreational vehicles down there and knocked in the wall and done damage, knocked over the post. So I'd, I'd be quite willing to uh have a provision as uh, was it uh Mr. Kumsishmail, was it your concern? Or maybe it was John Mountains, I'm not sure, but anyway, I agree with that. I don't think we want to have RV parking in the downtown area, I don't want it, I'll be glad to uh. Uh, go along with a version of that nature.
Okay, thanks, Ron, and then just uh one, one last question for you to kind of tack onto that. Um, right now, it's a, it's a bit muddy down there, and I would say it would be a. A bit of a challenge for ADA accessibility, is there? Would there be some requirement around that? Um, with the addition of paid parking as just a benefit of getting paid for those spots, would there be? Maybe a bit more ease of access for ADA accessibility?
Are you saying just put in a couple of ADA parking pads uh uh down there? I'm I'm not sure. What you'd like to see, so if you could expound a little bit.
Sorry, I, yeah, I'll clarify a little bit, you had handicap parking spaces, um, sort of designated at the front of the design, I believe. Um, the rough drawing that was um submitted. And I was just wondering if there'd be ramps or some sort of accessibility that would um add ease of access to. To, to the walkways um leading to town.
Well, a- again, I'm not quite sure what you would mean, the entire area is gravelled and the uh. Uh, ADA signs are put on one of the levelst part of the uh parking area there is there. I, I just don't know how much more I could do other than to put a slab down that meets ADA requirements, which is, I think. Eleven feet wide and uh maybe uh nineteen feet long. I did do one, but I forgot the dimensions, but uh. Uh, you probably have one regular ADA parking and one van accessible, which is a little bit wider than a regular. Um, ADA parking space, I'd be willing to do that.
Okay, thanks, Ron.
But again, I'm not sure I answered your question, I posed my own and answered it, so. And that is, would I, and I said, yes, and my answer is I'll put down slabs, which would definitely help somebody. Uh, getting a wheelchair out of the rear of a van or off the side if it had a lift on the side.
Yeah, that, that helps, Ron. I've, I've just been, I guess, um, you know, being on the RTD quite a bit this, this past winter, I've, I've seen the struggle that some folks have, um, getting around town in general.
I agree. I have a handicap placard, I use handicap spaces, I have bad knees, I'm very sympathetic and, uh, very, uh, interested in seeing that things are ADA compliant.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Ron. Thanks, John. Any other questions specifically for Ron?
I guess, I, I mean, Tanya already asked this question, but Mr. Mitchell, I just wanted to, I guess, just to clarify and, and state it for the record. Fundamentally, it seems that what you're looking for, uh, based on this narrative and this proposal is to simply be allowed to charge for parking on this lot, uh, that already has parking on it, um, and to, uh, and to allow for an SRU that would allow you to expand the number of spaces. Is that a correct assessment?
Not quite. I'm asking for both the, uh, additional parking and the paid parking in one decision.
Okay. So the qualitative, yes?
So, yeah, you don't want to come back here month after month as every little detail gets SRUed.
That's right.
We got another topic for next month.
Apparently isn't going to happen until May.
Oh, okay. Um, any other questions for Ron?
Yeah, Ron, uh, you, you asked, or you mentioned something about your, your overarching developmental, development plan and having a consistency of zoning across that as well as, uh, you know, speculation on the, the bridge and, and feeling that that was more appropriate to have it next to the, um, commercial, to a commercial district. So, yeah, I mean, you're asking to do paid parking now and to increase the number of lots. Uh, however, I'm just curious if, um, you know, well, for one thing, we, I don't think we can necessarily give you permission right now to do paid parking in the high-density residential. So if there was will to do that, um, on behalf of the board, we would still need to go back to the drawing board and, um, and start over and, and try to get that done that way. So the only thing we're considering now is, is converting this to neighborhood or to commercial or not. And I'm, you know, I guess I've heard you say just in this meeting that you have a couple other interests in converting this to commercial business district as opposed to just, um, allowing for additional parking lots as well as paid parking. Can you clarify that?
Sure. Um, recreational uses could be made of the retention pond. There was, uh, for the event last weekend, a small, uh, human foosball game set up on my property. Uh, and, uh, I didn't, I didn't watch any of the games. I don't know if it happened or not, but the retention pond is not going to be used that often. I don't know how many storms we're going to have, nobody does. But you could have, uh, advanced ice carvings, uh, maybe even, uh, 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 acoustic non-amplified music down there at times. You could have, uh, parties and the sing, things like that. Uh, you've got a big round oval that is designed to help flood control. You're not going to have that many floods and it could have recreational uses right along with the park. Um, I did mention that and maybe not everybody heard it, but that is a possibility. And, uh, your comprehensive plan says try and find more recreational opportunities for the citizens and, and that sort of thing. I see that as a, as a potential recreational tool along with being a flood control tool. Uh, people go down there and play on it anyway. Uh, I've had the people down there picnic-ing and, uh, family meetings and things like that, so I haven't stopped it, but I would hate to have it prohibited. Um, so, uh, I haven't specifically, I mean, nobody has approached me yet to do something like that except once I had a wedding there. Uh, and there were people in that area and a little, uh, religious sort of altar set up for the people and about two hundred people showed up. Uh, there was security and there were no problems. Uh, I'm fine with having a wedding in the park. I think that's a great, uh, social feature that you could have. Uh, I don't see anything wrong with it. If, if there is, then I really think you're, uh, denying potential recreational use in an area that can't be used for much else anyway because it's in the flood plain. You can't, you, you put structures in the flood plain, you can't really, uh, uh, do anything with it other than have it as a park. So of course, let's have a park. Does that answer your question, Jesse?
Uh, not exactly. I was just more asking if, if changing it to, uh, commercial business district achieves more goals for you than simply charging for parking?
Yeah, I just, I didn't quite understand the question. Phrase it some other way.
Um, if all you want is to do paid parking, you know, perhaps there's a way we could do that that's less res, less resistance in the community?
The hell was that?
My question is, uh, do you want the, the zoning change for more reasons than just paid parking? Does it, does it dovetail in with your, your master plan?
My major objective is more parking and charging for it. There are ancillary uses that could be done, uh, and I wouldn't object to them. Uh, and I, I would encourage them if it was allowed. If you want to make it absolutely restrict you to paid parking, additional parking and nothing else, uh, I could live with that, but I don't think it's very good land use planning, Jesse. People are using it now, you know? I pick up a lot of dog poop there, people walk along there. I don't mind because, uh, it's a close-in, uh, sort of enclave that, that people like. You know, if, if I have to, to pay my bills to satisfy the IRS, if I gotta deny the entire town and anybody else that wants to walk around there, uh, and enjoy that, uh, area, enjoy the, uh, picnic tables, enjoy the river, have a little bit of solitude or something like that, uh, I don't want to do that and it's pretty selfish to think of me to say so, but I have to. I, the IRS will not let me, uh, take the expenses of that property off of my income tax unless there's income. So we're down to a point where you gotta make some reasonable decisions. And, and I have to have a decision that allows me to charge for it or I simply will eliminate the parking. It's that simple. And that would mean eliminating the park. That would mean just putting a fence up along the place and saying, keep out. Is that really what you want?
Of course not. Miranda and Jennifer, could I ask you a quick question? How long would it take us to get, um, get it done to allow, uh, paid parking in the residential zone realistically?
So it is a chapter sixteen amendment, um, which means it would need to go before the planning commission and then a public hearing, a first read and a second read before, right, attorney massive board of trustees.
Right. And I mean, we, well, also, if it's an urgent matter, I mean, we just put through a, a change to chapter sixteen in, in a month with the special meeting of the planning commission. I don't know if that's something that everybody wants to do, but it, it was done.
So a month?
That's a good.
In, in, in the fastest scenario, it could be done in a month, in, in the leisurely scenario of two to three months.
That sounds.
Yeah, that's correct.
Correct.
And just to clarify again with, uh, uh, Miranda and Jennifer, uh, this would still requ, even if we changed the zoning today and SRU would still be required for this proposal, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. So, so it's not, it's not actually necessarily that much faster or slower here. We can't, nothing, the, we can't get to paid parking today, one way or the other.
And then SRU goes to, must go to the planning commission and then goes to the board of trustees. So it is a two-step process.
Right. I just wanted to clarify that, that, that we're not, uh, there's no way that we can basically make the paid parking happen tonight.
Well, just to clarify, it would go to an RS, SRU to extend beyond twenty parking spaces.
Well, it's really both. They extend it beyond twenty parking spaces and for the commercial activity.
Okay, so for both.
Why would it need a, why would it need an SRU to just do paid parking on the existing spaces that are already there?
So paid parking is like, is a commercial activity that is not allowed use by right in any of the zones.
Right. That's why I want, that's why I was asking the question earlier, but what if we just went through all of the zoning tables and added park, a parking column that just made it explicit where paid parking was allowed and where it wasn't allowed? So we don't have to do this whole SRU thing every single time under a umbrella of general commercial activity.
And so it could theoretically happen just as quickly that way as, as the other way. Both, both scenarios could, could achieve the, the fundamental goal that you've been pointing out to us, Eric, in the same timeline theoretically.
That's what I'm seeing, at least. That's what I've been trying to determine if, if that is the case.
And one benefit with that is that it's not a piecemeal application of the SRU process is what you then put in place is a legislative scheme related to paid parking. And you identify what your rules are, parameters are, how you want, you know, the land use to operate. Do you want the, um, parking to only be for two hours? Or will you allow parking for thirty-six hours? Like you put that stuff in the legislation in your zoning code and that would apply throughout the town to any lot that could be used for paid parking.
I like it. And that's why I was trying to understand from Ron. So if both, both scenarios can get you your fundamental goal, if, because, because I've been wrapping my head around this, um, quasi-judicial decision that we have before us, thinking about it and, you know, I feel that there are arguments for, for going with, uh, CBD rezoning. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. We haven't gotten that far along in the discussion yet, but, um, that's why I wanted to hear from you, Ron. It sounds to me like we could achieve your fundamental stated goal of paid parking with more parking lots. Two different ways, both of them would, and both of them could happen theoretically just as quickly. And so that's why I was saying, all other things being equal, do you, do you care beyond just those, that stated goal of paid parking and, uh, and more lots?
What about the other commercial activities? The weddings, the family reunions, the parties, uh, the foosball games? Are you just going to say no to that and people just walk around down there? Man, I do want.
You're wanting to charge as event space?
I didn't understand you, Jesse.
Are you wanting to charge revenue or charge, uh, event planners, uh, rent for the, for the use of the space for a wedding or for a foosball?
Yes, I would.
So I guess then what you're saying is.
I have to say, Jesse, uh, I spent every, after every frozen dead guy days, two to three thousand dollars cleaning up after them and never charged them a thing. Now I wish I had.
No, Ron, so alls I'm trying to get draw out of you is a, is a straight answer that it sounds to me like you're saying it without saying it, that you do prefer to go with CBD rezoning, even, even if we could achieve just paid parking and more lots, you're still pre, pre, partial to, to CBD rezoning.
Of course, that's why I made the application. I, I'm, I don't know how straight an answer I can give you, Jesse.
Well, you just gave me a super straight answer. That's what I was asking for. You, you achieved it. Thank you. No further questions.
Thanks, Jesse. Thanks, Ron. Any more questions for Ron? If not, um, we will move into public comment. I know we did hear some public comments before and I, I did not take the time to listen to that last meeting because I didn't have the time to re-listen to it, but I was there and I know, um, well, I think we had gone with folks pro, you know, I think we, you know, I remember we had gone with folks, you know, for the rezoning, primarily given comments. And then I think we were just moving towards folks who were against the rezoning, um, and that's where we were. I just want to get sense from people if they're okay with just continuing into that or if, if, if they want to hear just open public comments. I want to hear that from the trustees. What do you want? I could see value with both.
I'm sorry, uh, please repeat your question.
You want to just open up a public comment altogether and, you know, starting with people for the rezoning? I don't know what that noise is, guys. Sorry.
Someone's getting a message. Uh, you want to hear, like have it in order or just how they come in?
No, no, in, in order, I think is what we did before and I like that.
We want to hear the same comment that we already heard from people.
I, I'd, I'd almost rather if we could hear something that we haven't heard before.
New people that we haven't already heard.
Okay.
Be priority first. And then if there's time, because we already heard the comments, we read the letters, we didn't forget. Um, and it's, we don't want to get to that point where.
Then we're pretty much, we're moving into the comments that were against the rezoning. That, that's where we were, if I remember correctly.
Unless there's anyone who's for the rezoning who hasn't spoken yet, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we'll open it now. Anyone for the rezoning, uh, if you have a, a comment you want to make about that and you haven't spoken, if you didn't speak before Kathleen, I believe you did. So anyone else? And correct me if I'm wrong, if she didn't.
She didn't speak about this matter.
Uh, on February twenty-first, are you sure?
Oh, I got you, yeah.
She did. Um, so let's go ahead and just then move to the folks who, who, um, want to speak against it and then we'll see where with time regarding Kathleen's.
Will I have a chance to respond to these people?
Um, uh, let, let's, let's, let's see. I, I want to preface this a bit. I, you know, I think I talked to Ron a bit, do you, Ron, after the last meeting and you felt pretty beat up, you know, a lot of it was non-agenda stuff that people, I, I want this to be, if you have comments against, focus on the three criteria. I, I don't want to hear, personally, we don't want to hear a lot of batching and, 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 um, I mean, if, if history is relevant to the three criteria in this property, then we will, that's relevant. But, but really, you know, you know, all good people here and we just really want this to be respectful and not just, um, not disrespectful, quite frankly. So that being said, if you have comments, I really want you to focus on the criteria and the property.
Could we get the three criteria up on the screen for reference for folks?
Thank you.
Are we going to be hearing from people that we haven't already heard from, correct?
Yes. And I know we interrupted Teresa. I don't even know if she spoke at all actually, but she may have started, but we, um, that's where we cut it off that day.
So Mayor Billy, it's Miranda. I can't, um, do the timer and show the criteria at the same time. So someone else can do the time on my phone, but you won't be able to watch it.
Okay, um, actually, I'll do the criteria on my phone and if, I don't know if I can be seen as well, but, um, let's see. I'll just pull my thing.
You do the time shift.
There you go. If I hit that.
I mean, you're going to be really small. I'm not sure if that really matters. I think you just need, you just need to call it when time hits.
Okay, cool. That sounds good.
Didn't we hear what everyone against?
We heard, we heard, um, folks who were for the rezoning before. We didn't, we just, had just gotten started on the folks who were against. We made, we heard from some, yes. We hadn't heard from all. I, I know specifically we, we stopped Teresa. I, I know specifically we, we stopped Teresa.
And Teresa got three minutes and got cut off in the middle of three minutes and now gets to go again?
I didn't even get to speak.
No, she didn't get to speak at all. She started to speak and we ended it. Kathleen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the land, here are the three criteria. The land to be rezoned was zoned in error and is, and is presently zoned is consistent with the policies and goals of the comp plan. The area for which rezoning is requested has changed or is changing to such a degree that is in the public interest to encourage a redevelopment of the area. The proposed rezoning is necessary in order to provide land for a community-related use, which was not anticipated at the time of the adoption of the comp plan. And such rezoning will be consistent with the policies and goals of the comp plan. Okay.
Is it time for me to speak?
Yeah, you can go ahead.
I have also two other neighbors that have seen me times. I've prepared comments for, I might not use the whole nine minutes, but I, it's my understanding you have nine minutes. And I have prepared comments. I'll try to amend them to, to match what you just put on, but I have prepared comments. Um, and they are respectful. So, good evening. My name is Teresa Robertson. I live at 140 East First Street. Note my letter, submit it in your packet. I live in an old miner's cabin at 140 East First Street that I've been privileged to own for the last 24 winters. This cabin was built in 1910 with additions in the 30s and more recently in 2017. During tourist times, our home is photographed on the average at least three to five times a day. Why? Because it's unique, charming, it's unique, charming and good repair. A marriage to the old and new qualities of Netherland. With a look towards sustainability at both solar panels, stucco and metals, metal siding in our modest 2017, 300 square foot addition. My home is a living example of why tourists love Netherland. I'm speaking to you tonight to urge you to deny Mr. Mitchell's application to change the 100 First Street zoning from HDR to CBD. Um, and also I'll get on to the whole, let's make this a wedding venue era because we addressed that with him in 2016. I'm going to get to that. Let's be clear that this zoning change decision is the essential linchpin. Mr. Mitchell needs to allow his entire project to unfold. Given Mr. Mitchell, whoever he may sell his properties to, the ability down, down the road to change the Netherland attracts tourists here. The consequences of your decisions tonight are immense. Why? Number one, this lot serves its designated, design designation to buffer our HDR neighborhood from the encroaching CBD district. On January 25th, the planning commission voted unanimously to decline this zoning change. During the February 21st BOT meeting, Roger Cornell made a point to come and share their rationale. Bottom line, zoning is a big deal and the zoning established in the 80s was not done incorrectly. Number three, Mr. Lots, Mr. Mitchell's law extends much further east down, East First Street than the Snyder Garage. Its zoning impact would affect our residential neighborhood's character. It, it butts a private residence. And our quality of life. Um, then I also had a point about we don't have the infrastructure. I'm going to skip that. And I'm not going to talk about the potential prolonged disruption of First Street by construction. I think we need to listen to people's institutional memory. So lastly, most importantly, our experience with Mr. Mitchell is that he's not been a good neighbor. He's not demonstrated acting in good faith for anyone's interests other than his own. During the Monday, February 13th library meeting, he suggested conducting construction during nighttime hours. That was just another demonstration of Mr. Mitchell's inability to think about the consequences of his actions on our entire community. I've been concerned throughout this entire meeting to hear Mr. Mitchell's threats about either he gets what he wants or he closes all his parking lots. The wedding that Mr. Mitchell discussed prompted our whole neighborhood getting together or with a mediator six and a half years ago. This was in August 2016. That wedding was loud. It was disruptive. Our neighborhood is not interested in that lot being become a wedding venue. We had a verbal understanding. They was planning to build housing and we were in agreement. Okay, I'm amending this to make it go faster. When Mr. Mitchell purchased this property, he knew it was zoned HDR. Um, we came to that mediation because Mr. Mitchell was interested in hosting community events with amplified music. That is another neighborhood concern that Mr. Mitchell brought up again this evening. We are not interested in that lot having large public affairs with amplified music. We are very concerned about Mr. Mitchell's ancillary uses he would allow on this lot. We are vehemently opposed to this. Mr. Mitchell gets a yard and then he asks for a mile. Um, in the February 13th meeting, Mr. Mitchell talks about the need for housing. 100 First Street is already zoned for HDR, be a perfect place to begin. The HDR zoning is there to shield our neighborhood. That's why it's there. It's not incorrect. It's doing its job. Some people argue move to that neighborhood near downtown, so buck up. The reality is many of us have been here for 20 to 30 years. The CBD district has encroached and grown into our neighborhood. The HDR zoning is designed to serve as a buffer. To change the zoning, to quote Commissioner Cornell, changing zoning is a big deal. Am I interested in Mr. Mitchell's development dream to recreate Netherland to look like Black Hawk or Breckenridge? I live in Netherland, Colorado and cherish the charm of our town. Mr. Mitchell claims to want to make Netherland better, yet what he does is ultimately proposing likely tear up First Street for two to three years. I'm going to skip that part. So what I'm concerned about, if Mr. Mitchell gets his zoning request, he, he, he could sell his entire portfolio, portfolio to another investor. Myself and my neighbors are not in favor of bridge access being used as leverage to grant Mr. Mitchell what he desires for his property. As was mentioned, there are two other sites being considered for secondary bridge location. Do not be seduced by that carrot of an option. The Fisherman Lot Site is already owned by the town and can provide the needed emergency egress. Ron Mitchell owns most of downtown Netherland, yet he does not live here. His desires and decisions have impact on those who live and work here. As evidenced tonight by his threat of closing the park lot on this lot again if he doesn't get his request. Ron Mitchell lives in Boulder, not Netherland. I don't want to live in Boulder West in the mountains. We need housing. We are not in favor of a change in zoning to CBD. I implore the BOT to deny Mr. Mitchell's request for zoning change. I applaud trustee Coombs' esmeal proposal of adding paid parking to the HDR tables. I think that's an elegant solution. If your decision is to go forward, Mr. Mitchell's change of zoning request, then I strongly encourage you to place a deed restriction on that change so that the lot remains with the initial purpose requested by Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell is not going to have to live with the consequences of his misplaced development dream of improving Netherland. I will and you will. Thank you for your time.
Mayor Billy, we can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Thanks, Teresa. Any other folks have comments on, on this rezoning application?
Comments against, right?
Comments against. And I did get a list of the, you know, this is a continuation of a meeting. Some people did speak during the first half of the meeting, which was in February, but, and so to speak again really would be, you know, to speak twice during the same meeting. So I have a list of people who have spoken already, but there are some folks attending that did not speak. So if there's something you want to comment, you want to share with us, please do.
I'd like to make a comment, Mayor Billy.
Chris, I think you were one of the people who spoke. Let me just look at my list real fast.
I, I did, but I have additional thoughts. It's actually a completely different comment than I made previously at the meeting in February.
Um, I'm gonna have to, this, this is, this is the joy of having a meeting continue two months later. I'm going to have to say no, because I know we're doing all these sharing of minutes. That sucks. Sorry, Chris. But, but we've been doing all the sharing of minutes and no one officially did share with you and you did make your comment already. So I think just to be fair, I should say no, and I will say no for now. Sorry. Thanks for being here. Walt says a comment I'd like to make.
Steve.
Steve, that's what I thought.
Mayor Billy?
Hey, Steve.
This is Steve Williams, Chair of the Planning Commission and Netherland resident. A lot of what I was going to say has already been said, but let me just give you a little bit of background from the planning commission meeting that we had in January. And the, the main comment that I'd like to make is the fact that we, we sort of concentrated on those three criteria. We didn't look at anything outside the application such as what other uses the, the lot would be used for. Or if it was part of a bigger picture of a development in the downtown area. But I guess the conventional planning wisdom is that the, you know, if you should only rezone if the zoning was done in error. And we did not find any evidence that the zoning was done in error when it was zoned originally. And, and so that was the main reason that we unanimously recommended not changing the zoning. Also, as a protection to the town, we were also concerned that the site could be developed in other ways that the applicant, you know, had talked about and we didn't want all that to happen. So we, we decided to recommend that we did not change the zoning. I've, I've heard tonight a number of other solutions that might be a much better way to go. So again, from, from a planning commission and zoning perspective, we recommend not to rezone. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Any other comments? All righty. Hearing none, we will bring it back to the board of trustees for discussion. And, and yeah, just a reminder that, you know, by the criteria still up, this is really what we have to base tonight's decision on regarding any, you know, the rezoning application.
Well, I mean, this is Tanya.
Go for it, Tanya.
I, I do feel like we do need parking, that it's, things have changed since the last comprehensive plan. Every business owner is in favor of this parking lot. Every residential owner, for the most part, is against it. So it's just because it's kind of like the border land property. We're, we're here on both sides and which is why I do feel like we're trying to find a compromise. I want to say, you know, with, in future developments, for instance, annexation developments that might be before us in the future, there's going to be issues with the change of zoning that will have to occur for high-density housing and a forestry zoning and things of that nature in which spot zoning will be encouraged as something that we need in our comprehensive plan and things like that. So I, I just don't want us to, want us to stay consistent in how we speak. And, and in both senses of consistency, I think a compromise is the best. I think either by doing neighborhood commercial or by allowing parking in a high-density development after an SRU, is that what we're saying? Or is it just going to be a use by right? It could be either way. I, I mean, I'm fine with either. I, I also want to kind of like stop spending so much time on these issues. So when it comes back three or four times, we all get a little tired of it. And I know Ron Mitchell does too. I'm in favor of allowing parking on this lot, paid parking. I think we need it. I don't think he's going to build any housing in the near future on this lot. I know we need housing. So I would hope that we can come up with a compromise that will satisfy everybody.
Tanya, I think that's, I think that's really well said. And I think the point about consistency is, is really key here. And in order to be consistent, we have to, we have to look at the code as it's written, right? Rather than projecting hypotheticals onto it into a future that is not actually in front of us right now. I also believe that it is useful to have this lot as parking. I think that, that Mr. Mitchell should be able to charge for that parking. It is his property. I have nothing against that whatsoever. I don't think that this rezoning request meets any of the three criteria, unfortunately. But I also don't think that rezoning is the best way to get to where the applicant and all of us, I think, were, want to, want to get to, which is a situation in which paid parking is possible, which he can develop a, a park area next to it and potentially high-density residential in the future as it is zoned HDR and it was purchased HDR and it's been HDR since the 80s, right? So I think that it, on criteria one, it clearly wasn't zoned in error, or at least we have no evidence of that. And we'd have to have evidence of that to make that judgment. On criteria two, it's very difficult for me to argue that the area itself has, has changed that significantly fundamentally. Uh, the need for parking might have changed, but the area has not changed. And then on, on number three, that's, that's where I could see a potential argument because that there is a community related use that was not anticipated at the time of adoption of the comp plan. But I'm not sure that this rezoning will actually be consistent with the policies and goals of the comp plan, which is an end statement in that, uh, number three there. I don't think that the request meets, clearly meets any of these criteria. That's not to say that I'm against the plan that was put in this request by the applicant. I'm very much in favor of Mr. Mitchell's plan. I think it's a good plan and I think that we should amend town code such that that plan is possible to execute. And I think that we can do that in a timeframe that is similar, if not equal to the timeframe that it would take under this rezoning strategy for the property. So the way that I'm thinking of this right now is that rezoning is not the appropriate way to achieve these goals.
Thanks, Eric. Um, what else? What are you thinking? Actually, I apologize. So there was one more public comment that Melody was having a hard time with audio and trying to get in. Miranda, I think has it and she could read, read it. Is that correct, Miranda?
Yes, sorry, I can. So just really quick, from Melody Baumhofer, Netherland resident. She says, my public comment is I do not agree with rezoning the property. We need housing. This is an undeveloped lot and one of the only places to potentially put housing. I would opt for allowing PC to decide which zone should have paid parking. I would opt to incentivize with code ways for this land to be developed as housing and maintain the neighborhood's wishes.
Thanks, Melanie. Appreciate it. Okay. Other trustees?
Yep. Can I go now?
Yes, sir.
A couple of things. On the residential housing side, it's not, people aren't generally aware yet that Mr. Mitchell is putting, and you've seen, Billy, you and I talked about this. There is some resident, residential housing about to come on stream that Mr. Mitchell is going to be proposing shortly. Uh, it's a total of 39 bedrooms in addition to some commercial space. So we're, we're not without resources. I'll let him tell the story when it's appropriate, but that's on the, on, in the future.
Yeah.
Back to the three criteria. Things change, the, the, things change over time as, as they develop. And, and, and I think we, not, not that long ago, the Central Business District used to stop at the sandwich shop before Bucy. I talked with Roger Cornell just before this meeting started and learned that. I talked with Roger Cornell just before this meeting started and learned that in a PUD called Burplank in nineteen ninety five, that a residential lot was subdivided into what became the east end of our business district. That includes Bucy Brews, it got with now a Gotti. And so times over time needs change. I'd like to see our business district grow. We're a small town, so there's, you know, as Tanya said eloquently, it is the frontier. It's but it's right in the middle between the two. I, you know, it's not, I love the fact that we get some storm runoff and drainage out of this and some other uses, but that's not germane to what we need to decide tonight. But I think what is germane is that conditions over time do change, have changed. And I don't, I take Mr. Mitchell at his word that he's not going to going to be building anything soon in that space because it wouldn't make sense to build on a flood plain. So I think we're getting a real public service on somebody else's dime. And and did I mention that the 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 tax rate changes were probably in towns' favor? So I'm I know how I'm gonna vote, but I those are two facts that I wanted to get on the table before we make a decision.
So just to clarify what you said, Tom, you're saying that there were the the buildings to the west of this property were originally high density residential?
That's my understanding, yeah, from talking with Roger.
They were actually rezoned to CBD in order to permit the buildings that are there now.
In nineteen ninety five. I haven't seen the document myself. I only had a couple of minutes before this call started, but I thought it was germane to our discussion.
Thanks, Tom. Nicole, Jesse, John, what are you thinking?
Um, yeah, I mean, this one could be, this one's a tough one for me because I can see arguments on both sides. You know, that information that was just shared, that kind of that makes sense. It is this particular property is abutted by CBD on multiple on two sides. I do agree with Eric in that, yes, we shouldn't allow paid parking and however that happens. I guess the the thing that I'm trying that I'm grappling with right now is does going to commercial give us more flexibility into the future from a land use perspective, right? It could go to mixed use. It could go to the the various commercial activities. It could still be a park. I mean, somebody today could just put a park on there. You know, the argument that it should be state, it should be used for housing. It's by right, somebody could put a park on there today and nobody gets and nobody gets housing. Like that that's used by right today for high density residential. So, yeah, so this one's this one's tough for me. I could see very much just amending the the use groups and, you know, the to allow for parking across the board. I do like that proposal because it just makes pay parking its own column and very much specifies for that, which I think we need anyway because parking was not written at all into the code. And so I think it would allow for some specification and some clarity across the board. But I can also see very well where this particular property, where it sits, there is an argument just because of where it sits that it could go to CBD. So, yeah, so I guess that's it's not necessarily an answer in one way or another. It's I can see it going both ways very easily.
If if I could just chime in, sorry, before someone, I know that I've spoken already. I just I just want to make sure that we're sticking to the criteria, you know, and and because it's a quasi judicial matter, I just think it's really, really important that we do this for landowners' rights and for the equal enforcement of town code, right? If we don't stick to the criteria, then we are not doing this properly. So I mean, criteria three, you know, the proposed rezoning is necessary in order to provide for a community related use that was not anticipated. Not it could, it must be necessary, right? Like, it clearly to me isn't necessary. We can simply amend the use tables, right? In in our zoning code, and then we can we can address the problem that way. Again, one and two, like, I just think we need to look at the criteria, and I'm just urging people not to project into development futures on what the property could be, because that's not in the criteria.
But you could argue, you could argue that number two, that the area is changing. As Tom has said, it has slowly been growing towards the east. There has been more need for parking and for CBD type activities. I mean, it's all very vague. I mean, it's not, this isn't a concrete.
It's the number two. It's it's the second criteria.
It has, Tom's correct, and I I haven't done the research, but would you say nineteen ninety five? That wasn't very long ago.
Well, and I I want to caution everybody from really considering that as evidence, because that was not introduced as part of evidence. That was a comment that was off of the record. And it wasn't part of the the public comment portion of the hearing. You're deliberating now.
But is it true? I mean, I haven't looked it up.
No, for these these kind of things in SRUs, you you really can only look at the evidence and the comments and the things that are brought to us during this hearing. That's all we can weigh. Roger made a statement, and I'm February twenty first and said nothing about this. So we can only weigh the 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 things that are given to us in this kind of, you know, folder.
Page seventy to eighty two.
Of what?
Of the packet. That's what we have to adjudicate on.
Yeah, that in the public comments.
John, do you still want to chime in, or is it up to me?
Both of you, I'd love to hear.
And you gotta chime in too, Billy.
I will.
Yeah, real quick. I I guess, would it be appropriate in the spirit of partnership to ask Ron what his thoughts are about Eric's proposal?
You've already you've already asked that.
He did.
And really, you have to you have to make a decision tonight on the on the rezone request that's in front of you.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think at this point, we really just have to look at the three criteria and and decide. You know, I mean, right there is it's written there on the screen. I know there's the opening paragraph. Yeah. Okay. Probably need some work, but that's what we got tonight.
And John, it is worth noting that that idea that that I had mentioned was something that was actually given by Ron in his public comment in the last meeting, right? So the idea came from the applicant, came from Mr. Mitchell. Just want to make that clear.
Gotcha. Okay. That helps a lot. Thank you, Eric. I apologize for the the lapse in memory.
Sorry.
I have a question about the the third point. So if if this were to somehow get killed or stalled and Ron was not able to charge and therefore recoup the cost, I'm sure it's expensive to maintain that lot. And he were to close that, would that potentially become a necessity then? For that land to be a community related use? If that lot is closed and there's no longer parking allowed there because Ron, for whatever reason, the process gets stalled and we can't push this through by hook or by truck. Does three come into play? I know that's a we're talking about, you know, a series of events that have to occur in order for Ron to get paid parking at this point. We're still we're still kind of tossing around the the possibilities of how to do that. One way to get this done is to move forward with the proposed solution that's in front of us tonight. Another way is to amend the code, as you said, Eric. Which of those two could potentially put that number three into play? Were we to wind up with a scenario where Ron, rightfully so, let me add, it's his land and it's expensive to maintain, has to close that lot? So I guess that that would be my one, that would be my one tipping point, because I think two is very gray for me. I can go either way.
Miranda, are we closing visitor center lot this summer for anything?
Uh, visitor center lot will likely be impacted by the transportation improvement project, but we have not mapped out the timeline for that project yet.
And when is Fisherman's Lot getting closed?
Fisherman's Lot was set to be constructed end of May, beginning of June.
And that will be out of commission for a few years.
Um, they actually think they can do the whole project this summer.
Okay.
The the parking will go away as soon as May.
Oh, yeah, it will never be parking again.
There's gonna be, uh, there's gonna be like some diagonal parking, like you said.
They're still parking.
So the parking lot itself, as it stands, would not be.
Right, it'll be on the street. Can it's street parking still be used this summer, you think?
You know, I think there's gonna be a lot of a lot of heavy equipment coming in and out.
Gotcha.
Leaping season, but not most of the summer.
Okay. Sorry, I'm trying to turn off my hand and I'm.
And to answer your question, John, I I don't know that the future is what we look at. I mean, this is my take on it. Like, that third criteria, I think, is based on what's up today, not what's up with a potential future. If it gets shut down, and does that change number three, I guess? I don't know, as I look at it. Maybe I'm wrong, but.
I guess, yeah, thanks, Billy. I appreciate you clarifying that. I guess I guess might do clarify that question. My my question is, which of those two solutions is more easily achievable and can be done more quickly, I guess? And that's that's a question because I'm really not clear on exactly what it takes to amend the code.
So my art, my argument on that, John, is 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 essentially that the way that the code is written for the CBD right now, even if we rezoned this lot right here and now today, it wouldn't allow for paid parking. There would still need to be an SRU. Right? Because that's the way that the code is written. I am arguing that what we actually need to do is change the way the code is written so that we have clarity on what kind of parking is allowed in different zoning districts in town, be it the CBD or high density residential. So in effect, that kind of needs to happen in some way, shape or form anyway. So we're not, we're not accomplishing anything for anybody tonight, really. We're simply rezoning something and allowing somebody to to start an SRU application. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Like, a paid parking lot wouldn't appear tomorrow if we approved this today, right? It would still need to go through a number of steps.
Why is paid parking not a use by right in CBD?
Paid parking isn't used by right anywhere.
Well.
We haven't addressed parking at all in the code.
Right.
What Eric's saying needs to happen anyway.
Correct.
Essentially, yes.
So I say, let's let's do it, and we might it might get to the point where where Mr. Mitchell, the applicant today, doesn't even need to submit an SRU. We might decide that there is a use by right for paid parking and high desert, high density residential, and all this rigamarole is unnecessary.
I'd like to coin the word rigamomo.
Yeah, you said it wrong.
Jesse.
Um, yeah, so I'm favorable of the rezoning request and reason being, so if the in the narrative paragraph, trying to stay focused on the three criteria and considering the criteria, the public comments and the and the evidence provided in the packet. So the second line, if a a rezoning can be done if one of the three criteria is met. And in my view, and what's been presented before us, all three of the criteria are actually met. And and I'll go through them quickly. Number one, the the land was was zoned in air initially. And Ron basically spelled out in his narrative that that was, did have a commercial use prior to the to the zoning. And yes, town staff said they weren't unable to corroborate that, but nobody was able to say otherwise. And, you know, I I will take Ron at his word that he has some evidence and some knowledge of that for making that statement. So that's that's the evidence been provided to us in this argument, and that's what I'm going with right now on that. And number two, the area for which rezoning is requested is changed or is changing such a degree that the public interest is encouraged redevelopment of the area. So basically, that that lot has been used as parking for the last six years or more. And that has been providing a public service for this entire time. And Ron has basically provided a service to the town at no benefit to himself in terms of revenue. Sure, he's had some potential for generating goodwill amongst the business community and so on and so forth. However, he's unable to collect any revenue which is required to maintenance and maintain any property in good working condition. So that tells me right there that criteria number two is met. And criteria number three is that it does provide a a community related use, which was not anticipated at the time of the comprehensive plan. And the rezoning will be consistent with the policies and goals of the comprehensive plan, and that has also been laid out in the in the packet. And I don't have those exact details of that, but I do remember feeling that that was the the park, the public use, the parking. All of those have been spelled out in the comprehensive plan. So for all those reasons, I am satisfied that not only one of the criteria is met, but actually all three have valid arguments for being met. So that's that's where I'm in favor of of the rezoning request.
Thanks, Jesse. Yeah, well, as I read through them, you know, the the criteria and conditions for rezon is outlined sixteen two fifty five. Only one of those three criteria needs to be met for rezoning. But should be noted, the purpose for the purpose of establishing sound, stable and desirable development within the town, the rezoning of land is to be discouraged. Rezoning should only be considered if any one of these. To me, the land to be rezoned was zoned in there. I mean, Ron does state that in his narrative, I believe. I couldn't quite find it, but I do also read that the, you know, it stated that he that he states that and he gave some other uses. But the property file does not contain any information confirming these these prior uses. And town staff cannot provide comment on whether the parcel was zoned in error, and Steve mentioned that from the PCs, you know, work on this, that they also found no no evidence for number one. So I don't think it meets number one. The area for which rezoning is requested has changed or is changing to such a degree that it is in the public interest to encourage a redevelopment of the area. So I read that pretty specifically, like the area for which the rezoning is requested is just this one piece of property. It's changed or it's changed to such a degree that is in the public interest to encourage redevelopment of the area. I I don't think it meets that either. And then three is the proposed rezoning is necessary in order to provide land for a community related use, which was not anticipated at the time of the adoption of a comp plan. And such rezoning will be inconsistent, consistent with the policies and goals of the comp plan. I I also don't think that that is necessary, and I don't think it meets that criteria either. So that's I kind of land as 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 it not meeting the criteria. That's where I sit.
Well, Billy. Well, Billy, um, Ron's statement, that is evidence.
No, it's not. No, it's not. I can make a statement. It's not an evidence. I mean.
It is, it is evidence, but, but, but it's also not, uh, it's not evidence that it was zoned in error. Just because there was a prior use doesn't mean that.
Yeah.
When it was zoned, they didn't intentionally zone it to be HDR. Like there's no evidence that it was zoned in error. There's only evidence that there might have been a prior use.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that the rezoning was done in error. I guess there's no evidence for that. In my, in my reading of it. So, um, most of us have talked about where we're leaning with it. Um, what other comments do folks have or where, where are folks at with it?
I mean, I moved to deny ordinance eight three seven approving the application for NC BDR LLC to rezone one hundred first street to the central business district zone district because the applicant does not meet the following criteria. One, that the land to be rezoned was zoned in error, et cetera. Two, the area for which rezoning is requested has changed or is changing. I, I do not believe that is the case. And three, the proposed rezoning is necessary in order to provide land for a community related use. I don't believe that it is necessary. There are other mechanisms we can use other than zoning to achieve this goal.
I'll second that. Miranda?
Trustee Sterling.
So can we clarify what does a yes or a no vote equal?
Oh, yeah. Thank, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Very good. So the, the move, thank, thanks so much for asking for that. So the motion is to deny the application for, uh, a rezoning. Uh, so, um, so a vote of yes would be denying the rezoning, which would mean that you'd be saying, no, I, I, I don't agree to the rezoning. A vote of no would be to not deny. So it would be more or less approving the rezoning.
No, no, that's not what it means.
Oh, okay. Thank you for.
Yes. So you, you're voting on this motion to deny. Um, yes, means the property will stay as HDR. Um, unless there's a mo- uh, unless the motion fails and you would have a second motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay, so yes is, um, denying.
Yes.
It is basically choosing it's gonna say HDR and a no is not agreeing that it should continue to be HDR.
Yes. And then if it fails, there would need to be a subsequent step of a, of a second motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. Miranda?
Yep, trustee Sterling. I can't see anyone.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking, thinking, um.
Her AI froze. This is a very confusing vote.
Do you want somebody else to go first?
Yeah. Yeah, can she do that?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Trustee Severs.
No.
Trustee Corvallon?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Mahold?
No.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Eric, Justice Coons Isma?
Yes.
Trustee Mountain?
No.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
It's a four, three, as I count it. So the motion fails.
Um, I move to approve ordinance eight thirty-seven approving the application for NC BDR LLC to rezone one hundred first street to the central business district. Uh, zone district because the applicant meets the criteria.
I second.
Second?
Who was that second? Was that Jesse Mountain?
That's me, yeah.
Um, alright. Mayor Billy?
Uh, no.
Trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
Trustee Severs?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Coons Isma?
No.
Trustee Mountain?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mold?
Yes.
The motion passes. So, um, hundred first street will be rezoned to CBD. Um, any comments before we move to the second action item?
Yeah, no.
It will be much quicker. And we need a break or we're good?
Let's, let's get through this.
Power through it. Okay. So fun. Alright, so, um, our second, um, action item of the night is actually gonna be fairly straightforward, I do believe. And, um, um, it's a streets equipment lease agreement and I think, uh, um, Miranda.
Yep.
Mark, Miranda and Rita?
Yep. So I'm gonna take the lead on this. Um, Rita and Mark are here to support me, but to your point, hoping this is straightforward. Uh, last month, we had talked about last meeting, we talked about the streets department's request to purchase a water truck, a grader and a flatbed diesel truck under a five-year lease agreement with Clayton Holdings LLC. In order to move forward with that lease agreement, we need the board of trustees to approve ordinance eight thirty-nine for the lease purchase and escrow agreement. Per Carter revised statute, a lease agreement does need to be approved through an ordinance, which means it won't take effect until thirty days from publication. And we have major arrangements with the mountain near to publish if approved tonight on Thursday. Um, I think it's really important for us to note that the amortization schedule, really schedule C is subject to change because of this, because we couldn't lock in an interest rate. Um, we hope to do so after this is passed, but next to impossible when you have an ordinance here. So we'll lock that in. The other thing that is not in the aim, but I just want to note is if you noted, you know, you can kind of see in the financial schedules we provided, the amount we have to pay this year is, is less. And so because you did budget a hundred and forty thousand for equipment, we would like to move forward with still buying some additional pieces of equipment outright using some of those savings of sorts, since you aren't having to apply the entire one forty to the lease agreement. Um, and this would allow Mark to purchase, um, a few smaller pieces of equipment that are also still needed. Uh, so really the question before you tonight is, do you approve this ordinance that would then allow us to finish out the lease purchase agreement and Mayor Billy would have authorization to sign all of the documents?
Any clarifying questions? Thanks, Miranda.
I'm just interested to hear public comment.
Yeah, cool. We did talk this through before. So yeah, let's go ahead and move it to, excuse me, public comment on, um, this lease agreement. The streets equipment lease agreement. Um, and we don't have to put anything on the screen except the clock. So raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment. Um, seeing none? No. Um, we'll bring it back for a discussion and the motion. We did discuss this just for the public to know. This was discussed at length before. And this just really had to come back because of our code. This has to be approved as an ordinance and therefore as the action item.
Correct.
So. I move to, what is that noise? I move to approve ordinance eight thirty-nine approving the form of the lease purchase agreement with Clayton Holdings LLC, St. Louis, Missouri, and the escrow agreement with UMB Bank and A and Clayton Holdings LLC and authorizing the execution and delivery thereof. Second. Second, thank you. Ma- uh, Miranda?
Yep, uh, trustee Severs?
Approve.
Trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mahold?
Yes.
Trustee Coons Isma?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Mountain?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody.
Rate soon.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing this back and, and letting, you know, we were gonna do this as consent. So thanks for keeping us on track and making sure we're doing it the right way. Um, so our third action item in the evening is, uh, was initially on consent and um, I just felt like as the others that we, we wanted to understand it more. So we want to talk more about this SB, um, Senate Bill twenty-three dash two thirteen, the land use bill. Um, and Jennifer, if you could discuss the aim.
Uh, yes, definitely. I'm happy to talk about this. So this is a bill that was brought forth. Um, really, um, primarily by, although the governor cannot really introduce legislation, um, this is one of his big goals. Um, in this legislative session is getting this land use bill approved. And essentially what it is, is a statewide land use and zoning bill that requires, um, municipalities to apply certain zoning standards, um, regardless of what their processes, um, what they have in place for zoning. And the governor says that the purpose of the bill is to reduce housing costs. Um, but one of the major criticisms is that there is no, really no affordability component to the legislation. Um, and that the idea is really if you build more houses, that market forces, um, would drive down the housing prices. Um, the Colorado Municipal League is strongly opposed to, to this legislation be- because it takes away uh, powers and authorities from local governments, from municipalities. Um, this is, is really unprecedented legislation in, in the state of Colorado. Um, as far as impacts on Netherland, it's not clear what the specific impacts would be. We're not a municipality, um, such as Denver, um, Boulder, bigger municipalities that this, this bill is going to significantly impact. Um, but there is a question as to whether Netherland could be considered a key corridor. And in a key corridor, the Department DOLA will determine what are key corridors. And the key corridor could be an area within a quarter mile of a bus route. And in that key corridor, then DOLA will set zoning standards for that area and say in that key corridor, you have to require, um, certain density of multifamily housing as a use by right. This requirement would be imposed without any public process. Um, and would be mandatory. Um, so I wanted to bring this before you as a really something for you to consider. I know there are other municipalities who are taking a position on this and uniting as local governments, um, in opposition to the state imposing these requirements. So that's, that's the overview of the hundred and nine page bill and happy to try to answer questions.
I, I have a question. This is Tanya. Um, I know there's a lot of unknowns, but you said that if you're within a quarter mile of a bus route, then the state will create a high density housing zoning mandatory. How far out does that extend? Does it say?
It would be in that quarter mile area as I understand it and DOLA will designate those areas. So right now I don't know what those areas are.
You don't know if it's like a mile out, two miles out.
No, it, it's, it's, it's within a quarter mile of that bus route.
Okay, past that quarter mile, they wouldn't have jurisdiction?
Right, exactly. Yeah.
It's just, I got you. Um, I mean, okay, I'll let everybody else speak and then I'll speak.
Um, question on, you mentioned other communities. How were other communities weighing in? Who's, who's, um, who, who should we pay attention to?
Well, I know, I mean, I know bigger municipalities are probably taking a look at this tonight. I mean, this bill amended. And it's not going to be amended favorably to, for municipalities. So the only option um, related to making any changes is to kill the bill. Um, and the bigger municipalities are likely making decisions tonight because it goes to committee later on this week. So that's why it's, it's before you now is because, um, it's moving extremely quickly. I mean, it was introduced in the Senate, um, not even two weeks ago.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I've been watching CML talk about this. I've worn about this.
Yeah. And, and I mean, this isn't an issue that affects, um, Netherland now, but it, it imposes requirements on home rule municipalities, um, which is really very significant. Um, it is, it is a potentially slippery slope argument. I mean, who, what could happen? But this bill will si- si- will surely have significant impacts if it is passed. And maybe some unintended consequences.
Guaranteed, yeah.
Perhaps, yeah. Um, do we have any, um, kind of material, you know, like, you know, in the, in the other direction, you know, arguing the other way. I know that C, we're just reading what CML i- is, is giving us and, you know, they, there's a lot of things that CML does that, that pertain to towns like Netherland and there's a lot of things CML does that, that don't, um. And, and they do say, you know, as stated in the sign and let, you know, this was, um, letter that came from fr- from CML. They said, as stated in the sign on letter to this general assembly, CML does not want to say no without offering a vision for how to do it right. So in asking for, for our opposition, they hope we agree that municipalities and CML can commit that local governments continue to work to address any local issues that may make hu- housing less available and affordable. Local governments will not use home rule and local control as a means to say no, rather continue to use them as powerful tools to address the statewide issues of housing affordability and availability. Local governments will partner with all groups to have a voice in housing issues, even those they may not agree with. So I mean, um, so yeah, I mean, basically they're asking us to do these things in, in its stead. But do we have any, any, if, you know, information for, for the bill?
I, I have not researched anything in favor of the bill, so I don't, I don't know. Um, and, and I can say that, you know, Netherland is taking steps, has, um, has the DOLA grant to do the housing need assessment. Um, and will, you know, as part of the housing need assessment, put in place some tools, either amendment to the code or whatever it is to allow for more affordable housing. I think one of the concerns is that this legislation really doesn't address um, specifically affordable housing. Just more housing.
Yeah, that's a key point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, well, little I understand about it, like it really came out of something that Oregon's trying to do because we're like, we're, we're one of the five states that's hurting the most for housing statewide. And Oregon is pushing through something like this and Colorado is trying to follow suit. But it is, it's interesting and surprising that there's nothing that they identified about, you know, how to make it, how to make things affordable.
I think there, there are open supply, demand. Create more supply, the price will go down, but.
Yeah.
Look at Boulder. I mean, they've, they've made so many condos back there by twenty-eighth street and prices have not gone down.
No.
I'm, I'm supportive of us opposing this. I, I don't like, um, I don't like Denver. I don't like, I like Denver. I don't like Denver telling every town what they should be doing.
This isn't Denver. This isn't Denver.
Well, the governor or whatever, the.
Yeah, but that's important. It's not Denver. It's the state. Tell them.
The state. Okay, fine. The state, I don't, I think every, I don't, I just, I am in. The state. Okay, fine. The state. I don't, I think every, I don't, I just, I am in, I think this will support developers and I don't think it's going to really solve the problem. And I don't, it would pretty much null and void every conversation we've ever had about zoning within a quarter mile of the bus station, I guess, is what you're saying. It wouldn't extend past a quarter mile of the bus station. I'm just curious because if this passes, I'm just curious, like future of Big Springs, the future of, you know, the elementary school neighborhoods, would they be impacted by this, do you think?
I believe as my reading of it is, is that it's really only the quarter mile that's adjacent to that transit area.
That's true.
Yeah.
Well, I already, I'm in support of us opposing it. I do oppose it. I already signed my name on the petition.
And and just so you all know, that in your rules of procedures, that taking a position as a group in opposition or in support of legislation, you need to have more than a majority approve that position. And so you would need five members approving that, the resolution.
Wow, okay. Thanks for.
So two, so so not just two, so not quite two, whatever it is, the three quarters, but just five of seven.
Yes.
Five and a quarter. Okay. All right. How about you other folks? What are you thinking?
The unintended consequences concern me and the basically riding roughshod over home rule, I think, is 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 over the top. That's all I get. And I read through, I did go through this thing. But Attorney Madison brings up some points that I think are really important to be considered.
Thanks, Tom. Any other clarifying questions before we go to public comment?
Yeah, just one on my part. You know, in my experience with property cap rate rules. And my assumption is that there's no consideration on the on this particular bill for the builder's ability to make money. So it would be the builder potentially who loses if we do have potential for building more HDR in in that area, if I'm understanding it correctly. Does that sound right, Attorney Madison? So who would, I guess, who would eat the cost of that low housing cost?
There's no mandate affordability in this, John.
It's not affordable.
It's just.
It's just market rate housing.
Yeah, it's all it is is saying that as a use by right, you can do this. So for example, in the larger municipalities, what one of the significant components is that every single family lot will be we will be allowed to have as a use by right and ADU.
But within a quarter mile of a bus station? No.
I got you. Okay.
No, just every single family lot can put an ADU in their backyard.
Oh, I see.
Understood. Okay, I'm sorry. I thought this applied to new construction as well.
It does. It does. But that's that's one piece. Or, you know, that if if within the quarter mile of the bus station, DOLA will require certain density within that quarter mile. Regardless of of what your town looks like or what the needs are. Or regardless of the cost. I mean, somebody could put up high cost condos.
Okay. Okay, so it doesn't, I don't know that it seems to solve any problems.
What it does is it takes control away from local municipalities and gives control to the state government. That's the problem that it solves. We have too much control over our own communities and they want that control.
Somewhere in Wisconsin. Okay, yeah, I'm definitely opposed.
What's that, Jesse?
It mandates higher density.
Got it. Okay, great summary. Okay, now I'm completely in understanding and definitely opposed as well. I agree with you, Tanya. I'm very much opposed to this.
Nicole.
Didn't have any other clarifying questions, no.
Okay. Any more clarifying questions? Otherwise, I'd like to hear from the public. Okay, we'll open up for public comment. What are you thinking about us opposing SB twenty-three dash two thirteen, the land use bill? Steve. Go ahead, Steve Williams. What's that?
I said oppose it.
Thank you. You came in just under three minutes. We almost started the timer. Any other comments? Okay, if not, we'll bring it back to the board for final discussion. And I have a question real quick. Is there, just kind of playing a little devil's advocate because I mean, ultimately, I agree with a lot of people politically on so many things that are for it. And then I agree with a lot of people that are against it. So it's a confusing one for me. And is there value in opposing versus not taking a stand or what you're taking? Jennifer, that's really a Jennifer question.
Well, it's really, it's really a policy decision of of the Board of Trustees. You know, what is your, what are your policies and your goals and your philosophies? Are you in favor of local government, local control, giving a voice to your residents to be able to have a say in land development and and zoning rules? That's really where I see it as being, you know, a policy decision. And if that's your philosophy and goal as a as a town, then I would say you oppose it and we'll send it to CML and and hopefully it can if a lot of municipalities take the same position, maybe it can be killed. Who knows?
Okay, thank you. Sonia, what other discussion the folks have? Just look for discussion in a motion, basically.
It seems to me that this is the best, is absolutely the wrong way of going about trying to increase housing stock in the state of Colorado. To to put mandates down and put all the burden on local municipalities while giving them no say and no control. Seems to me to be the opposite direction that we need to be moving as a society in general. So I would, even though I think that we're pretty bad at land use as a town, I think we're bad at governing it. I think we make pretty poor decisions. I think we make a lot of mistakes. I think that those are our mistakes to make, right? And I think that that's really important because that's how you have a a society that actually functions and operates where people feel like they have agency and control over their lives and over their towns and over their communities. So this is absolutely the wrong way to go about it. And I think we should strongly oppose it and I hope that we're unanimous on that.
Eric, you're really good with the motions.
Well, I move to oppose.
Second.
The resolution twenty twenty-three dash nineteen.
Do you move to approve it?
I moved to approve. Sorry, wrong word.
What, resolution twenty twenty-three dash nineteen?
Prove the oppose.
I approve the oppose, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Miranda.
Trustee Mountain.
Yes.
Trustee Garland.
Yes.
Trustee Gooms Ismael.
Yes.
Trustee Severs.
Yes.
Mayor Pretzemahold.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Thanks, everybody. Now I think we have completed our action items for the evening and we have a few discussion items. And Leah, I think you are on for the first one.
Thanks. Hi, everyone. Leah Haney, Sustainability Coordinator. The Recycling Resources Economic Opportunities Grant is through the State Department of Public Health and Environment. It's targeted towards diverting waste from landfills, reusing materials and specifically targeting rural communities that may not have the same waste management services that larger cities have. And so the Sustainability Advisory Board unanimously recommends pursuing this mini grant to purchase animal resistant outdoor composting tumblers for fifty households, which based on the average household size would be around three people per household. So hopefully a hundred and fifty to a few hundred individual people. And the target is essentially the the demographic of people who are interested in composting, but may not have the home setup and materials, the education or confidence to do so. And the Zero Waste Subcommittee is committing to committed to providing that training and support to educate people about the the proper use of these tumblers. It's partly due to the the composting contamination that we've experienced and the changes to our composting and in anticipation of our composting service that will be in place in twenty twenty-four at the transfer station, really increasing public education and awareness about proper composting guidelines and hopefully reducing the probability that we will contaminate our own composting once that's up and running as well. So it's not a huge dent in our composting problem, but we are hoping that the general education component of this would be a big aspect. So in addition to reducing food waste, obviously, it's also a a huge reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, especially methane, which is produced in landfills as opposed to composting at home. And of course, the secondary benefits of hopefully returning nutrients to the soil, maybe also encouraging people to garden at home and things like that. So we chose one particular Jora brand tumbler based on some residents who have successfully used this particular composter and haven't had issues with animals, smells, bears, especially this one is advertised as especially bear resistant, though not bear proof, because I don't know that anyone can really make that claim anyway. But specifically, one of the more bear resistant types, it's made out of galvanized steel, really sturdy. And again, people would have to have a little bit of outdoor room to accommodate this. But we do feel a lot of households would be interested in this type of composter. And I'm happy to pull that up as well. People would like to see more details on the composter specifically, but the town is requesting, oh, sorry, it's not a matching grant, so there's no upfront financial requirement aside from being a reimbursement grant. So we would require approximately twenty-three thousand to cover the purchase of the composters, which would be reimbursed by the end of the year. And distribution will be handled through the farmer's market, the latter half of the farmer's market season and housed at the community center, which we would also pay for through this grant as well. Any questions or concerns so far?
I have a question. How much do they retail for these tumblers if I were to want to buy one?
Sure, yeah, there, this particular size is, I'm trying to remember the because we had asked for a bulk pricing, so I don't know the specific, but I think it was.
More or less.
Yeah, nearly five hundred retail, if you're buying one individually, our bulk pricing is with shipping four twenty-eight per unit.
Nice. So you're asking town to, are you asking town to cover the initial cost and then get reimbursed later or no?
Yeah, yeah. So the questions before the board are, does town, does the board approve town pursuing this grant and purchasing composters for residents to use in town and the the transfer station's service area? And also, we would need the twenty-three thousand to cover the purchase, which would be reimbursed. Yeah.
And then who makes the, who is the grant go to? When did they make the decision? And what's our likelihood of succeeding?
Yeah, great question. So the grant is due at the end of this month. They make the decision, I believe it's July. So it would be partway through the farmer's market season and then it gets, it only goes towards supplies and equipment, unfortunately. So it goes to the actual physical items that divert waste from landfills, none of the like labor or services like that. And there was one other question I think I didn't answer for you.
Who is the granting authority?
Oh, yes, it's the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment through the Recycling Resources Economic Opportunity Program.
Is this something that Larry Tassaday would put in his backyard?
Yeah, he already got three.
Yes, actually, Larry has been writing this grant with me and he, I think he was going to be on this call tonight, but oh, okay, great. Yeah. And I have a, I would say, an inferior version in my backyard that I've also enjoyed. But Cindy on the sub zero, the Zero Waste Subcommittee was the one who originally vouched for this one. She and some family members have been using it up here for a number of years. She said it works very well. It's a Swedish style design, so made for cold temperatures. It's especially insulated. Yeah.
So the first fifty people or whatever that sign up for it, they pay you the four hundred or whatever, and that's how the money gets paid back?
No, it would completely cover the cost of the composters. So
How does the money come back? I guess I was curious.
Yeah, so they, if we were awarded the grant, we wouldn't make the purchase until we were awarded, of course. But that would go, we would have to purchase and complete that project and they would reimburse us on the other.
It's a standard request for reimbursement grant, which is pretty much every grant these days.
Okay, cool. Yeah, that makes sense. And what kind of space do you need? I mean, like in high density residential, it's usually about ten to an acre. Is that, I mean, how much space you said?
Yeah, and actually, I'll go ahead and share my screen so you can see what it looks like. Can you see my screen?
Oh, yeah.
Great, yeah. So there are these insulated chambers here. It's a dual chamber, so you can have one that you're feeding and one that's finishing. And then I was gonna pull up these sizes here. Sorry, there. Looks like it's a little tough to navigate. So this middle one was the one that was recommended for, say, an average size, three percent household, which is the typical American household. And so it's, you can see it's nine point five cubic feet. It's a seventy gallon. That's how much it weighs. So not a lot of outdoor space necessarily, but it would, you know, it wouldn't work for an apartment or a very small. Yeah.
Didn't need to be. Yeah, I was talking more like how far away from the property or the house, but doesn't look that big.
Yeah, yeah. And it is supposed to, you know, really minimize odor. So I don't think it has to be super far. Mine is pretty close to my back door and I don't smell it. Of course, it's winter right now, but I haven't had any issues with as well. But yeah, other questions? And I'm gonna stop sharing here.
I'm just curious, how long does it take to get? I mean, it's that soil that comes out of there, but like, you know, the compostable product you can use soil with, like.
Yeah, that's a great question. I wonder if we could ask Cindy how long it really takes. She she mentioned it was fairly quick, you know, a few months, but not as quick as, say, you know, a larger hot compost pile, for example. It is still a tumbler, so it's not, you know, a large quantity that would be turned over very quickly or safe. Like if you had worms, it goes a little faster sometimes, but.
Just curious. I mean, I've been supportive of this. I feel like it's, if you get it, it's a no brainer. It's no cost of town. Five hundred people or no, fifty people will get a composter.
Yeah, and hopefully a hundred and fifty people minimum, really like two people would be the minimum per composter based on their size. Like, you know, necessarily target individuals or wanting to get households that would make a little bigger impact in terms of waste.
Fifty households will end up with a composter and at no cost of town and, you know, so I think it sounds great.
Great.
This is awesome, Leah. I did have one quick question for you. We've, I've had a little bit of work with a sustainability coordinator in Summit County, and she was having substantial issues with composting at elevation. Have you heard anything, any problems with that, or is there a resolution for that, like different bacteria or what's?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good question. It can be a bit slower because we have less oxygen. It's, it's not, I don't think it's, I'm not an expert on composters, I should say I have a decent broad knowledge, but because it's an enclosed composter, it's not as reliant on oxygen, right? It's more contained, but yes, I have heard that it is a little bit slower, but no issues in terms of like rotting food as a result. Really, the worst that happens is it freezes in the winter, and so that that's not really composting, but it's not, you know, attracting insects or rodents or anything because it slowed down.
Got you. Okay, thank you. Great, great job. Good presentation. Appreciate it.
Any other questions for Leah? And then any other questions for Leah?
Maybe can I, Julia, would you be okay if I just jumped in? So the grant is due at the end of the month. Obviously, we're bringing this to you as a discussion item. We would put it back on the eighteenth as sent, just approving the final application before submittal. Unless you wanted to move it today. Your choice.
Any public comment on this item? I might as well just open it up. This is a discussion item. Any public comments on? Just going for some composting for town? Right? Hearing none, the question before the board is whether we approve, does the BOT approve the town applying for the, for the grant? And if so, do we approve twenty-three thousand dollars for the purchase of the composters?
So we wrote that, just really quick, we wrote the questions for the board, you know, as if you're, but this is not an item to approve tonight. It's just a discussion. Again, you could choose to move it to an action and give Leah the green light tonight. Otherwise, we'll bring it back on the eighteenth.
I think I would rather just give it a nod as a nod of four for bringing it back on the eighteenth.
I don't know, Leah, though. Do you need an official vote? Some applications need the official date it was approved by the Board of Trustees.
Oh, I don't know the answer to that.
That's been a huge thing lately in all the grants I've done, and I do think having an official record of a vote.
Consent, to consent.
It'll be on consent, so that'll be the vote.
Well, thank you, Leah. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Will getting it on the consent be in time for this application?
Yeah, I believe that's ten days, yeah, ten days before, so, but I'll have it, you know, essentially written before then, just waiting the approval.
Okay.
Thanks, Leah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Our next discussion item is discussion of amendments to the election section of the Ned Municipal Code. We have, we have two more discussion items. They really should be both be quick and straightforward. I'd like to make a move now to extend the meeting to ten fifteen, just to, so we can keep rolling. Thank you. Miranda?
Trustee Sterling? Is that a no? It's a yes? It's a no.
You're muted.
You're muted.
I can see her. I can see her face. I was like, charade.
Hopefully see like my tiredness. That wasn't
That was a no.
We might be done by ten, anyways.
Uh, trustee Mountain?
Yes.
Like, don't make, now I gotta look up. A trustee Coombs Ismael?
No.
Uh, trustee Corvone?
Yes.
Mayor Pritzfeld Mahold?
Yes.
Trustee Severs?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
It's eleven o'clock where you are.
Yeah. I don't have my family though, so I'm good.
So Jennifer, if you could, if you could
I will. I will be quick here, too. This is a discussion item on amendments to the Netherlands Municipal Code, the election section of the code. And essentially, what's before you tonight is a draft of the recommended amendments. If you give me, if you provide a nod of four, I will bring this back in a complete ordinance form for a formal vote as an action item. They are basically cleanup amendments and clarifying consistency with the current process of what the town already does. There's two new sections. One is for a write-in candidate and the ability to cancel elections, and both of the two new sections are consistent with state law. Towns have the authority to provide for those two provisions on write-in candidates and cancellation of elections. So that's a brief overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
You just answered my question, which was that I wanted to clarify, those are provided for in state law, but they're not mandated by state law, right?
Correct, that you can implement these two different provisions.
Okay. And I guess, I mean, I'll just say it, I'm against the cancellation of elections section. I think we should know how many votes people get. I think that's part of public and democratic process. And no one should get office by default. That doesn't seem right to me, but is there any downside to that other than the cost of the election that I'm not thinking of?
It's really just the cost.
And I think the cost is worth it personally.
Okay, then do we have a nod of, do we have nods, four nods?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Well, there, there is one, so there's one thing that is a question, and it seems to be what Eric, trustee Coombs Ismael raises, is do you want to include the additional section that I added, which is for cancellation of elections, which requires cancellation of election if you only have one candidate?
So I agree, I agree for Eric. I don't think we need that.
If we're gonna sorry, do you want us to clarify questions and then go to public comment on this, Billy?
Yeah, sorry, I had to step away for one second. Um, yes. Let's go ahead with clarifying questions, and then we will move right to public comment. Seeing none, we'll go ahead, hearing none, I'll go ahead to public comments. Kathleen, you have your hand up? And
Do you want me to go over it?
Yes, please.
Ron Mitchell has donated his time to Kathleen, so she will have a total of six minutes.
Thank you. All right, Kathleen.
I'm trying to call in.
Hello?
You're good.
We can hear you.
Okay, I want to thank Ron Mitchell for his minutes. I've been researching this election language subject since last year's general election and the fiasco where we came out of the election with two empty board seats and two candidates who had received the fourth and fifth most votes, but that the town argued were not elected to those open seats. I will follow up this comment with details of all I have found later this week, since I will not be able to fit this into my public comment. In nineteen eighty, Netherlands passed Ordinance one seventy-seven, the first local ordinance that addressed local elections and specifically board vacancies not covered in state statute. The language in Ordinance one seventy-seven, section ten, was titled vacancies and existed in public record and was implemented through the twenty sixteen general election. Prior last year's general election, I inquired as to why the ballots went and say pick up the five candidates, candidates when we knew there would be more than three seats that would need to be filled, and I was directed to section two dash four titled Four Year Term Limits for Trustees. That language didn't appear as my memory served and red flagged me, as I did remember a code section being titled vacancies and being very plain and clear. And Netherlands used it often over the decades since many people have resigned before terms have been up. Last year, the town got sued over the fourth open seat not being filled by David Seitz, who got the fourth highest number of votes in the election. In the town's court motion to dismiss that suit and in the court proceeding, the town attorney repeatedly stated that the town code didn't contain any vacancy language that would address vacancies other than a usual term being up to two, being up in two dash four. Additional things she answered to the judge about overlapping and unclear term limits made things even more convoluted, and in my opinion, was intentionally misleading the basic policy history in Netherlands. This was another red flag for me, so I researched the evolution of town's election language, and I found that the language found in Ordinance one seventy-seven has no public record of being lawfully removed from the code. It appears to be unlawfully removed sometime after its last implementation in twenty sixteen. Ordinance one seventy-seven, two dash four is titled Four Year Term Limits for Trustees. Section two dash ten is titled Vacancies. They are completely different vacancy subjects, yet strangely, some of the language from section ten vacancies was taken inappropriately and added to the current muni code sentence in section two dash four titled Four Year Term for Trustees. This change is also not found in public record and makes its presence as questionable as the vacancy section being unlawfully disappeared, section ten. Today, the muni code lists only three ordinance that address local elections. Ordinance one seventy-seven that created the language in nineteen eighty, ordinance four thirty-five in nineteen ninety-six that didn't address any election language at all, and ordinance seven fourteen from two thousand and thirteen, which left the vacancy ordinance language in ordinance one seventy-seven, section ten intact, and is why it was in the code in twenty sixteen when it was last implemented. The unlawfully missing language from ordinance one seventy-seven and the altering of section two dash four, Four Year Term for Trustees, is what caused the violating of two candidates constitutional rights and denied them their lawfully elected seats on the BOT, gave them both personal grief, cost the town at least sixty thousand in Seitz's legitimate lawsuit, enabled the attorney to mislead a judge in the court of law, and took almost a year to fill the board with the second election immediately following the April election and then appointments to fill. When this was first on the agenda a couple of months ago, but was postponed, that proposed language is different than what is proposed today. What was proposed in that pack, it was language that appears, but the town attorney was surely aware of the language from ordinance one seventy-seven that was unlawfully removed. I find it curious, today we are looking at even a different set of language now. They do look to be cleanup language, but to me, it's cleanup of unlawful activity. Those three of the options don't matter, and the change recommended for two dash four has been unlawfully altered, so we have language that verifies this. We didn't need the town attorney to spend time trying to fix a problem that was self-inflicted by someone who has or had access to the original public record, the town code, and what muni code has online. Since all these problems exist only because the language was unlawfully removed and or altered, my suggestion is the BOT simply rectify the language in ordinance one seventy-seven, section ten, titled Vacancies, rightfully back where it belongs and should be today in the town code. Since it would have prevented all of the above mentioned problems, it was perfect because it solved the problems it was intended to solve and had not been tampered with, and if it had not been tampered with after twenty sixteen, it would have prevented an expensive lawsuit and the violations of people's rights. And this tampering did cost everyone in the community. I'm going to share the title of ordinance one seventy-seven. An ordinance establishing the Board of Trustees to compromise of one mayor and six trustees, providing for four-year overlapping terms for trustees and two-year term of office for the mayor, describing the structure into and position duties and providing for the installation, removal, and filling of vacancies on the board. Section ten Okay, great. I'll email the rest. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Any other comments on this discussion item? Of the amendments to the election section of the NMC? Hearing none and seeing no raised hands, I'll bring it back to the board for discussion.
I am curious, this is Tanya, will this help us in a future situation like we had in April when Julian resigned as soon as he accepted the position? Knowing, I mean, that was a messed up situation where he had let us know in March prior to the election that he was not going to be able to do the term. I feel like we need to have some language if we're going to bother rewriting stuff to accommodate these sort of situations when there are enough applicants who are running for election.
Well, it really depends on how you want to handle that. I mean,
I don't want to handle it like we handled it this time. It was a fiasco. It should be more streamlined.
Is your, in that, in that case, would, if we only had one person running for mayor, would the election be negated? Is that what we're saying?
That's something that could, could happen. You could cancel the election for mayor based on this, on this language. But, you know, that situation was a very unique situation in which the candidate running for mayor communicated ahead of time that he was probably going to be leaving. And so the question was, how was his seat going to be filled? And then there was a vacancy on the trustee spot that was open.
I just feel like, if you're going to rewrite all this, can you come up with some sort of scenario for future boards for this exact scenario of how it should be handled?
Well, I mean, when it, we can, and that would be something for you all to decide and for you to decide what you would want to have happen. A future board may disagree with you and may want to have it resolved in a different way. And that's how, that's what the, the state statute is on it now, is how it was resolved. Is it, the Board of Trustees had an option to fill vacancies either by election or by appointment?
So what we're talking about now is, should you write this language up so that we'll get, and we'll give it a look? That's what we're deciding right now.
Right.
Then
And, and what it does do is it does clarify two dash four, which was the basis for the lawsuit. And it clarifies that it really is only intended for purposes of specifying what term limits are and not for requiring the board to put a runner-up into a vacant position.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, and my, my point is unrelated to all of this entirely in that I simply think that even if it seems goofy that we should have an election even if everybody who's running would win, because I think that recording the number of votes and having that public and having that part of the community process is important, even if, even if there's only one person running for, for a spot.
It gauges your level, level of support.
Exactly. I mean, it would be kind of strange if everyone on the board but one person knew how many votes they got, right? I, I think that that would be fundamentally kind of against basic democratic principle. I want to know what's I wanna know what support I have in the community.
We're down to four minutes.
All right, let's move on.
Yes, we are. I have, uh, just one other question. What, I mean, um, and I think there may or may not be a reason. Is there a reason why we, um, have elections in April versus November when we get more people to vote? And then we touch on.
It's a statutory town. It's way, it's, it's set by statutory towns. If you wanna move it to November, I believe you have to do so by the vote of the public. You have to move it to a November election, which you can do. As a statutory town, you can do that.
We, we make it a public vote for people to vote and decide when they want it?
Exactly, yes.
I think more people would vote than, yeah. Okay, it's just to me, that, 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 to me, would be a huge improvement.
I do know, and, um, Miranda can chime in on this, but I think the election was quite a bit more expensive having it as a coordinated election in November.
Very much.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, tens of dollars where a standard election costs three thousand.
Tens of thousands, really?
Thousand, twenty-six thousand dollars total, I think, and I have to go back and look, but it was significantly more expensive than our election.
It's, is it because they use the voting machines? And the voting machines are much more expensive.
They translate everything when they prepare, and we also had the ballot book, but they translate everything. They print, you know, it's their printing, their staff time. Basically, it becomes an IGA where we split costs for their staff and everything they do. And so our cost share was extremely high.
Well, if we didn't have anything on that ballot, we wouldn't have to pay anything.
Correct.
Oh, well, that's a big reason. I didn't realize that. And that was just our tax stuff on there?
Correct.
That's a bummer. I mean, yeah, I mean, that's good information. I mean, did we get that many more people voting for measures?
I think it's about two hundred more people. I think it was like seven hundred total, and we've gotten up to five hundred before.
Like twenty percent more?
Yeah, that's huge. But that's expensive. Okay.
Let's let Nicole go to bed.
Yeah.
For the skate park.
Um, so are we good to have, to instruct Jennifer to finalize an ordinance for a public hearing in the future?
Yes.
Not a four? Yeah, okay, cool. Um, it's ten fourteen. Miranda, what's your take on?
We can move it. I mean, we'd like it in place before summer is our goal, so we can bring it back. Although there's a ton of discussion.
Have a lot of, like, controversy about this, or can we just, really quick, do it?
I'm, I'm good with it, but it's ten fourteen, so I'll make a motion to go till ten?
Twenty.
Twenty, ten twenty-five. Ten twenty.
I second that.
Thank you.
I just wanna get things out, done and out.
I do too.
Can I just do, is anyone opposed? Oh, no, no, I just need to devote, okay, trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Mountain?
Yes.
Trustee Corvone?
Yes.
Trustee Coombs is mile.
Yes.
Mayor Pretzheim Mahold?
Yep.
Mayor Billy?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, really quick. Um, so before you, it's a skate park ordinance. Prostab and the Parks Department talked a bit about the regulations for the skate park. Originally, scooters and razors were prohibited. The initial reason for that was there actually was concern about skateboarders and razors climbing, different riding style, and potentially some damage to the skate park. The Parks Department hasn't seen any of those be an issue and feels that allowing, uh, razors and scooters would be appropriate at the skate park. So we're just looking to see if you'd like us to bring back an official ordinance allowing razors and scooters as a part of that section of code.
Yes, I would.
If Nikki were here, what would Nikki say? Would she go along with this?
Yes, this is, so Nikki's not here because she's getting ready to go to Arkansas. She is in favor of this. Um, that's why I'm doing it.
That's all I need to know. Okay.
Prostab is in favor of this as well.
Good. Make the motion, or do we have any more discussion?
Public comment. Real public, real, real quick, um, not real quick, public comment, anyone in the public? Have a comment on this discussion item? Hearing none, um, bring it back to the board for final discussion and, and some nods.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. A lot of kids wanna use those. They shouldn't be getting harassed for it.
Yes, I'm in favor of this. I would also like to see bikes there, but, um, I don't wanna tackle that right now.
Don't, so, and, and we could bring that up another day. I would like Nikki present for that conversation.
I, I didn't hear that, Jesse. What was that?
Bikes. Oh, I would just, long-term, I would love to see bikes allowed there too, but I, I don't wanna talk about that right now.
Oh, okay. I still can't hear you.
It, it seems like a pretty straightforward, simple change to the code.
Yeah, I agree with it.
Sounds good.
We're in favor of more fun.
More fun.
Always. So, no, no, no questions for the, for the recommended change. So proceed. Thanks. Thanks, Miranda. Anything else on that item? If not, uh, any other business? Uh, I hear no other business, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Has anyone opposed?
No.
Ten seventeen.
Good night, Jesse. Good night, Nicole.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Jesse. Have fun out there.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Thanks, folks.
Thanks for your work, everyone. Take care.